Good morning. Today is Wednesday, April 7th. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners and the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes for February 17.
And I'll second that. We need to note that it has 45 days, just barely.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Motion passed. Public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Public comment. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Robert McDougall. I thank you. I just wanted to give my strongest congratulations and appreciation to the commissioners and all of the volunteers at the COVID pod a couple of weekends ago.
I saw you there.
It, we in this county do it better than a lot of the big cities that can't figure out what to do. Just was so impressed with everybody involved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It went well. Any other public comments? Any on Zoom? None on Zoom. Okay, item number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of business.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
So, I'll make a motion to that commissioner.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Road Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. How are you guys? So, as usual, we've been busy. Myself, well, with some help too, of course, we poured some concrete at Union Bridge to hopefully get ahead of some erosion that's occurring on one of them. One of them's probably going to be beyond repair, but we're hoping to save the other one. There's two structures right in the road there. They're in conjunction with the water district structure, headgates basically on the big canal. So anyhow, we spent about 1,300 bucks with the concrete there. And then I gotta give thanks to Jason Barrett for forming it up for me and helping for this stuff. So, I want to thank him, but got that done. I think it's gonna help. It looks really good. We hired a new guy, Jacob Pritchard. He's another gentleman. Hopefully that'll go better than the last three.
Yes.
I'd say I'm getting a little bit pessimistic about that, but we're gonna do our best anyhow. Also, I met with Tim Dutroux over here. He has property at the industrial park, helping so they can hook up to the sewer and whatnot. And it turns out his contractor's gonna take care of it, so you don't have to do much.
Which lots of.
It's across from RHB. You build another spec. There'll be.
Oh, okay.
I believe, I don't. Yeah, his concrete's helping to that. We had a rash to stop signs. We replaced a bunch of those. We had a wreck on Pitt Taylor Canal crossing just outside of Ambley. I don't know, about a month ago, like about three weeks ago. Anyhow, I went up there and put and marked that a little better, but I don't think it related to the accident. The deputy said they're just doing too fast and it was daytime, but I've been thinking about putting more markings there for nighttime, so I went and got that done mostly. I gotta get some more and then wait for some other signs. They really using for targets of that country. But anyhow, we helped over at the museum for a minute. I, Jerry, and Jason helped me remove the shed from Mrs. Ratley's. We got that fixed up some more other erosion spots on Rogers Road and Irish American on the big canal. Then I've been spraying weeds, actually spraying pre-emergent. Got Old Victory Highway down, so we should see no weeds up through this year, hopefully, at least on our. So far, as far as I can reach, about 15 feet, so that's a good thing. We started cleaning up the industrial park yesterday. We burned weeds over there on our shoulders and did a little more too, but all that salt grass over there started running away, so we quit. Wind wouldn't cooperate either, switching back and forth. Anyhow, we're gonna make that look quite a bit better. I believe we'll spray over there too. And then as far as the blade guys, we're basically done out east. It got dry, or excuse me, out west here, but we finished out by Ambley Summit towards Sulfur, towards Highcroft Mine, so that's gonna be pretty good. Not as good as it could be, but it dried out also. We're pretty much done for the most part unless we get some rain. So that's, but we covered most of the roads, so we're in pretty good shape. We cleaned the Ambley burn area and from that wreck, they fixed up the barrier wall out there. And so Kevin and Bill, they're out towards the Buffalo Ranch and finishing up drying out there again. But they will do Belcon to Canyon before they pull out, and we don't really need moisture to get that pad, so they'll all be in. It will be probably all gravel in the spring. Roads doing very good. Oh, we should have mentioned that we replaced the culvert in the Grass Valley area on Hot Road. We're hot and muddy. We just went ahead and did it. You know, it's not necessarily a road that we do, but it's on our right of way, so no one else is gonna do it. So, just replaced it. Got that done. I had a few complaints up there, so we're up there blaming this morning. It was kind of coincidentally, Mr. Ratley was at the meeting last Monday, and there was no complaints about the roads, but we have since then got a few, so anyhow, we're on it. We laid some roads in the valley here, laid in Holmstrom, laid in Millie Drove. That was Jerry, no, it's in Grass Valley. That's pretty much what I have. I'm sure there's more.
We have a salary resolution to approve, which is for Jacob Pritchard, which Dan mentioned.
So, that's bringing it in as a 27, six?
Twenty-seven, six.
Is it six? Effective April 12, 2021. I'll make that motion. I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All of the favor? Aye. Motion passed. Good job. And now you're gonna be up fully staffed.
Yep.
Yeah, good job.
So, landfill, the cleanup Grass Valley, well, again, cleanup Ambley. They've been getting robbed up there. They've been stealing gas up here at the landfill, and then last night, apparently they stole our solar panels off the trailer.
Really?
Yeah, so we got some game cameras to try and get ahead of that, what's going on. Probably a bone. And they've been busy. It helped me clean up some brush piles at the cemetery, so I appreciate that. Break through the brush so we can burn some, but. Fancy brush room, so we, you know. I went back and got some, got some prices and stuff, what it costs us to clean those, the transfer sites up. It doesn't look like we did it as much as it felt like, but I don't have any, nothing for all summer. So, June, July, and August, basically, but we were up there working, so we just kept it clean. You know, the guys were over there, but I didn't document that for some reason. I screwed that up. But anyhow, the other months, Carol, it looks like we're up there at least once a month, sometimes twice, and the grand total was about 6,000, 6,300 bucks. It averages, it cost us about $572 every time we went up there and cleaned it up. That's wages, transporting equipment, equipment rental and all that. So, pretty close to our true cost, you know, except that when they're up there doing that, they're not doing both department stuff, so that's, that needs to be considered as well. But yeah, that's what I come up with. I didn't get it in a word program or anything, Carol, it's just kind of a.
No, it's fine. I wrote it down.
Yeah, that's, that's what I come up, you know, sometimes it was a little more, sometimes a little less, but I just wanted to give you an average.
Yeah.
You know, it takes about three people to deal with it. Average of wages and all that. The equipment cost is steady, but it still needs to be included.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
So, that's where I, you guys have any questions on landfill? There was one other thing that came up at budget meeting about the fuel thing in Ambley. The guy still hasn't called me back. I tried to call you yesterday and you helped. They closed at four, so I'll try to get back on that, make sure that quote's still good.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Senior Center. I know you're here.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Fine, thanks. Okay, so we've been open, what, since March 15th, and so far, numbers are still pretty low, but yesterday, we actually reached over 34 people, which was pretty good compared to what we've been doing. So, everything on that end is going good. We, tomorrow, we're doing interviews for the admin position in the morning, so hopefully, we can get somebody on for that position soon. And then Larry and I worked on a grant, I believe it was for our.
Application for a grant.
Yeah, application for a grant to get some nutritional stuff that we needed done in the center, so we got that done. It was approved, right? Or no, we haven't heard from.
We're waiting.
Yeah, we haven't heard from Lori.
Yeah, we're waiting for a no so. So, this is the one I talked about in our budget meetings a bit on Monday. Back in November, we had the opportunity to apply for some kitchen equipment, and that included a meat slicer, a food processor, immersion blender. I mean, there are lots of things on here.
Cutting words, juicer, mixing bowls, knives, and a washer and dryer, but the washer and dryer was not approved. Everything else was approved.
So, they've approved it to the point where we have, we had to finish an application, which we did, and now they, it's their, it's their turn to reply back to us. Part of this was not approved as, as Crystal says, a washer and dryer. We, Monday's meeting, added that washer and dryer so that it's in the budget for after July 1. And there's a 15% match for this grant to the total of $2,633, and that part, portion of the grant will be paid for out of the gift month.
Anyway, that was great work getting that grant preliminarily approved because it saves us on the budget.
The other thing involved in this was the freezer condenser, which we were going to pay for out of the, anyway, it ended up, they're covering that under the grant.
No, that's awesome.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's even better.
Anyway, good work, both of you. Thank you for doing that.
And then our folks have decided they are not doing breakfast ever. They are not gonna return doing breakfast.
Oh, my gosh, because that's really popular.
Yeah. I don't like that idea.
Yeah. I think hopefully by summer, I can convince her to do breakfast again, because that was the big thing. That was something that everybody looked forward to.
Oh, yeah, you had a great turnout.
And so, I think her complaint was that when we do breakfast, we only have about four to eight people on homebound, because it's too early for our homebound clients to get up and have breakfast, but we have a bigger turnout for our congregants than we do our actual homebound. So, they're not willing to get up at four to be at the center, I guess, and they wolted that they weren't willing to do it. So, hopefully, I can convince them otherwise.
Because on the homebound, the people that you have, you could deliver an extra meal the day before, you know, a frozen meal or something, so that.
They're not missing out on a meal at all.
Yeah. And, okay, well, keep pushing on.
Oh, I am, because I know I've had a lot of people call in asking if we were gonna have breakfast this last Friday, and they've already called in for this month, so I hope they should change their mind.
So, I had asked, and I don't know if you've had a chance yet, how many of your patrons are residents of the city and how many are the county? And if you don't have, if you could just get it to Karen.
Okay.
Because it, I'm interested to see, I'm of course thinking there's more city.
Yeah.
You know, and but I don't know the percentage or anything, so.
Yeah.
If you can, that would.
I honestly, off the top of my head, can tell you that there's only about eight people on the county, not everybody else in the city.
Yeah, I figured it was at least 80 or 90%.
The city, yeah.
Yeah.
Why do you need that?
Well, I'm gonna ask the city for more money. They've got some stimulus money, and, you know, we need help with the senior center.
Yeah.
Because it impacts our budget to a great percentage.
We don't turn down money.
No.
No.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
And the other day, I guess over the weekend, we're not sure exactly who did it, but somebody backed into our back fence.
Yeah.
Our loading dock, like fence. Unfortunately, our cameras were not recording. They had been offline for a couple of weeks, so we had no, we couldn't even make report to know who did it, but, I mean, we kind of have an idea, but we can't blame anybody.
Yeah.
Now we have that.
Yeah. So, I need approval of that.
I'll make the motion to approve the, all the grants, the grant.
Wait, what, you did second?
I'm seconded, no.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the grant. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Motion passed. And another thing is the bingo machine, the numbers are correct on it.
It is correct enough, and they were so happy to see. Perfect.
It had a couple errors.
And now, yeah, it is just what they want. And so, today actually is exercise bingo day, so Colby comes in and she does exercise bingo with them on Wednesdays.
Oh, wow.
So, that is today.
That's interesting.
Yeah, she originally had her own setup, using the TV to do bingo, but then it's just easier if we use our own machine, and she just reads off the exercises, and so they seems to be doing okay with it.
No, that's awesome. I'll be able to come back when my life settles down. I'm not sure when that's happening.
Okay, yeah. Well, hopefully, eating your breakfast up and going in, so hopefully.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You're not ready yet. Okay. Buildings and grants.
Hello, good morning.
Been busy doing stuff over at the museum as well, helping volunteers and cleaning up all of theirs, getting rid of floor pad. Sometime next couple, three weeks, I'm hoping. We've done a lot of yard work over there. We got a bunch of weeds and vines and suckers and just about everything over there.
Yeah, there was lots of hidden items in those weeds.
And then we're getting all the water systems up and running now, or in the process of doing that, and then we'll start putting our fertilizer down and the fall fields down here, and we've already started spraying weeds out at the museum. We'll be doing. We'll be getting more into doing that, get all the water systems up and running. And then been talking with people about the pool in regards to the well that they're wanting. I was not aware of this until yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
But I made a couple of phone calls this morning. I have somebody come out and look, and they might go over there and put a pump inside the, there's a two-barbie out there pipe. I'm just gonna have to see what we can work out on. If we can get one big enough, otherwise, we'd have to have a much bigger casing instead of a three-inch pipe. We'd have to get eight or a 10, which would be a lot more costly to do. We got windows for Justice Court coming in versus second with the main. That's really it. Been really busy. It's been a lot of different.
Very easy to be very busy when you're short handed.
You haven't had any applicants?
None that I'm aware of. I've had one, but it's just. That's it. Not that looking for custodian backups or whatever for the fellow.
We have on here a frontier days application. You're aware of this.
So, I'm guessing this request is tentative based on what opens up to allow us the frontier days. Oh, good. Come on, why don't you come on up?
You don't look like Linda.
I can't hear you. I just.
Thanks, John.
We know who you are, but if you.
Daniel Shaw.
So, we're just waiting on the protocols, and I've been looking at the website, and it looks like they're gonna be passing off the jurisdiction to the commissioners, but we don't know when that's gonna happen, I guess.
Well, it's May 1st that they're supposed to pass it off, but what we do not know yet is, but what stipulations are gonna be tagging on to that. So, you know, we've already done a resolution that we, you know, are not in favor of their stipulations, but then again, we don't know whether it is yet.
Right, so we have to wait until the next meeting?
Well, I think we can approve it tentative based on, you know, what information we receive. Also, right now, there is a forum that has to be completed with the state for any large event.
Right.
But, you know, again, it might be a little bit early, you know, to do that, but I don't have a problem approving it based on, you know, that we make sure everything's okay as we go forward. And John, do you have any concerns? You guys do a great job, and we've missed frontier days.
Yeah, we did too. We just planned last year, we'll afford it this year. Might be a little different, but.
Well, you know, it'll be.
Something we need to do. We need to get out and mingle a little bit, and that's fun.
Yeah, so if there's.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the frontier days request. We're using the courthouse part, August 6, 7, and 8, with the stipulation that we have to comply with whatever is in place at that point in time.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Motion. Good, thank you so much.
Anyways, good seeing you.
You too. Good to be seen.
Yes.
Anything else, John?
Wish I had more to say, but we're just, thank you so much every day. I couldn't possibly just say anything.
Myron, for holding the community center together.
I stopped him almost on a big. He's putting his work in.
I appreciate it.
You know, I don't know how he's been doing at the senior center, so that's not, that's usually not my form, my forms usually at the buildings, but I'm guessing if I hear nothing, everything is good.
I think it's been going fine.
We won't get over trying to move that plastic out of your way though here as soon as I get a chance.
Okay.
So, we're just kind of, kind of hard, but we'll kind of spread it then.
Yeah, it's not in the way.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Library. I don't see anybody on Zoom. Not on Zoom. Fire ambulance. We have ambulance report, Love Lock Fire Department. I don't see anybody. Is Sean on? Okay.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, I can.
Yes, nothing significant to report from Grass Valley Fire Department. Everything's pretty well on track out there. That's really about it for fire. Just personally, just waiting for things to solidify on this, on this study group regarding fire and EMS.
Okay. Are you still there, Sean?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can. Sounded like you left.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so nothing significant to report from Grass Valley Fire Department. Everything's on track and just waiting for schedule and staffing to solidify for this study group for the countywide fire and EMS.
Okay. So, we don't really have Grass Valley on the agenda anywhere else, but could you touch a little bit? I was gonna bring it up under, under board comments, Grass Valley Town Board meeting.
Right, so we had our, we had our first meeting last Monday, first meeting we've had in about five months, and it was great. We had a very large turnout. Thanks Commissioner Rackley for showing up and talking to the community there, so that was much appreciated. We did set some potential scheduled items for the future in the summer. I believe we'd looked in June around the 26th for doing a town hall meeting out there in Grass Valley, and that would include a barbecue hosted by the fire department, and then looking way down the road, Turkey Bingo, and I'd, I'll have to get the dates on that. I don't have that readily at hand, but sometime, I think the week before Thanksgiving on the Friday. So, looking at those potential dates, and we'll try and firm those up, you know, depending on the commissioner's availability, especially for that town hall meeting. And, yeah, trying to get back on track pending. You know, COVID restrictions continuing to ease up as we, as we move ahead.
Good. I just wanted to make sure we got that in there so commissioners could get that on their schedule.
And was that June 26th?
June 26th.
I just want to be sure I heard right. Thank you.
Okay, that is, Sean?
That's it. That's it for me, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have, is on the line and chip unmuted for solving.
is on the line and chip when you did her salt.
Okay. I am, and Rodney walked in. Are you?
I'm still good.
You're still good. Rodney, we went over fire department. So since you're here, you have a report for us?
Okay, I think Marty might, is Marty on now? Okay, so anyhow. So in the last eighteen days, we've had twenty-two ambulance calls, three Reno transfers and three fire calls. Yesterday, we had three ambulance calls, just like kind of getting an update what we've been doing. We've got twenty-two firemen EMTs or AM, out of that twenty-two, four of them are advanced EMTs. Two are EMTs that are waiting for the state licensing. So we can't use them right now. We have two drivers only. And we have three on medical. So one of those, there's one waiting for license and two of the other ones have got some medical problems right now. We're still doing our CEUs every third Tuesday. We have training for that. They have to have over the next two years, twenty-four to forty hours of CEUs to re-license. And then, and they have to do a skills check also. And I think that's unless Marty's got something to go on now. Got all the equipment's in good shape. We're moving right along. Marty, you have anything?
Um, I think we are good. I was going to, so it was brought to my attention that there's going to be an EMR class started. And I guess Sean is going to lead that and that will be out at Wright Patch. Um, so I was going to talk, let Sean talk about that. And I don't know much detail on that at all. So I know that also our Zoll that we ordered through Grant is coming in. And like Rodney said, we've been busy and we're just trying to get through.
Good job.
Okay, fire department size, we've got twenty-two firefighters, EMT. Three quarters of the firemen are up indoors. We have five fire firefighter one endorsements. All of our physicals are up to date on the end of size and fire for all firemen. All equipment's in good shape. Brush truck was out of service. We got it back going now. We had a problem with the speedometer in it. We had pulled that whole housing out and sent it in and had it rebuilt. We took it out of county yard. They pulled it out, took it back in. It was under warranty, but it was going to be anywhere from two weeks to two months to get it back. So we picked up a used one, put a used one in there for now until we get that back. And so it's, we got it back in shape and going. We're doing firefighter one and two study class on Mondays and Thursdays. And then they're doing their practical stuff on the fourth Tuesday. So that's all of our training is still going on. We've been doing the, since the first of the year, we have been making out the paperwork to do the billing on the fire. So that's going on. And Mike's been gone, so he's going to pick that up and get that going. Um, we're working on the, Mike's been gone. We're got all the information for James on the fire inspections. And for the business licenses, so we'll be starting that. Mike's done a form and he's probably going to give you a report on that. And I think that's about like up to there. Um, any questions?
So is Mike going to give a report?
Yes, please.
I didn't see you back there. I didn't know if you were on.
He was hiding.
So yeah, like Rodney said, we're working on the inspection program. We've got a list here of all the county business licenses. I highlighted the ones in yellow that are brick and mortars that we will attack. There's thirty-three of those. We've created an inspection form. What I'd like to do is have these done in triplicates and they're carbon copied. So when we do an inspection, we'll give one to the business owner. I will keep one of them on fire chief. For documentation purposes, and then we'll enter them into the firehouse software so that we have can print out an ongoing record at any time that we, we need to. Along with that, then working with Rod on the gearing up for the ISO, this is going to be a big part of the ISO that we do. And I know insurances don't all use ISO, but they use either the fire protection rating systems or the building classification codes through various, and so they're basically using the same formats. They call them something different, but they use the same criteria. One of the challenges that I've had, as Sean can attest to, if you're still on Sean, is the Infra's National Fire Ins and Reporting System. They put a new system in nationwide and seems like about every other day it's down. And it's been quite a challenge for us to get our own. So
Mike, if I had an opportunity to comment on that Infra system.
Please. Go ahead, Sean.
Yes, I just, I would concur completely with what Mike is saying. The Infra's is currently effectively not usable. Almost every day the system goes out and loses data. And I have not been able to put in any information since last October and it was completely unannounced. And I don't know, you know, if I just personally fell off the state fire marshal's list or they just didn't notify people or what. One day the system went down and when I tried to find out what was going on, it was basically, you know, they're switching the system. And we, we were really hamstrung with that system to the point where, you know, we can't put any information in. But I think there's still an expectation that for, especially for like AFG grants and other fire-based grants, they're going to expect that we are doing Infra's data entry when it's not actually a doable thing.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Sean. I think you were on the phone one day when I called out the fire marshals on that and given an extension on getting that in. So anyway, that's been a challenge for us. We do have an AFG grant. I suspect that that will be awarded sometime in the third quarter. It is for SCBA ensembles for all the fire departments of $413,000. I actually put this in with a no match as a financial article for rural community. So hopefully that will, will happen. But I will say that some of these are dependent upon our, our training program and our firefighter one requirements to accept federal funds. So working on that one. The two grants from pool pack have been closed out. The parks have been distributed to all of the fire departments. Wright Patch has their debt gun. I did send some information in. I was working on a safer grant, which is a hiring type of grant through the assistance of firefighter grant program. I think Caroline said you the no fall on that, the most funding opportunity. But I've never really heard anything back. Should we go for that or not? And that closed on March 12th. But that comes up every year and that particular one was a three-year potential hiring program. So that's something we might want to look at as we go down the road and you guys have your, your meetings. I regret that I wasn't able to put a letter of interest in to serve on that committee. I've done a little bit of research, quite a bit actually, on park protection districts. Help set up a couple of other counties and transition them. So that can be of assistance to that with some of the ties I have in the state. Love to participate.
Well, the meetings are be open meetings, so you certainly can, you know, provide.
You haven't had one yet, have they?
No.
Because I checked the website all the time.
And we're, we have all three members now or two minutes ago.
Yes, Jonathan Reynolds from the city. Hi, my brain. Sean Burke and then also Neil Gallagher is on it.
And they've not started any meetings yet?
No, because I think the DA and Karen need to get together on getting that going. The Emily Fire Department, they need a remote and I'm sorry, I don't know the technical stuff. It's that thing that's on.
The deck and yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is that what it's called?
Yeah, monitor.
And I talked to Marshall and he said, you know, to put in the application.
I've not had any communications from Emily, but that's how we got right that.
Right, so.
So that cycle is backed up. There's two $10,000 ones.
So would it be, could you go ahead and take care of that and getting that in?
Uh, yeah, we can get ahold of the bar chief to get a quote on.
Wouldn't it be similar to what you've already done?
Yeah, but I guess, I guess we could do it from the backside to get, we'd have to get an updated quote because I'm sure the price has changed since we got the right.
Yeah, but if we could just go ahead and get it done and, and put it in, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm, I'm going to do it and I would hope, I'm hoping you'll do it.
No, it's easy. I mean, that's not a problem.
Yeah, because you've already done the other one.
Get an updated quote. And I don't know where they're at, right? Patch and Emily on the Infra's. I know Sean's working on the same frustrations as me, but I was under the impression they were just going to send me their fire calls and try to have me put them in. So maybe they're going to.
So you can check with Jerry.
Yeah. So I was thinking this month, we probably ought to go ahead and have a fire chiefs meeting, you know, and then go over some of that stuff and I'll get with you and we'll see if we can set that up for sometime mid-month or something. And it's good for everybody. We'll either have it and start up at Sean's and work our way down again or and go that way.
Yeah.
So we'll get that going and get some, see where everybody's at on their stuff.
You still, you still on, Sean? That's good.
Yes, yes, sir. I still am on. And yeah, we'll gladly host a meeting. We just have to find the date available is all.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say it's time for you to buy lunch, so.
I'll, I'll actually cook for everybody and then we'll have a EMS training event afterwards.
Yeah. Anything else you guys?
I'm reading had a question.
A couple of questions for Mike. Is AFG, is SCBA's? I need a copy of that.
Okay.
And then what about the other AFG grant that was going to be revised to possibly cover those books for Rodney?
So I, I have contacted AFG about that, region nine. They have agreed that the books are acceptable. We need to close that grant out. We've got an extension for the fire one program, which will expire in June. And one of the criteria is that we do test for the fire one. So after talking to Rodney this weekend, he's going to order a test within the next thirty days so that we can be compliant and I can pay for those books.
And you have copies of everything of the
I do. Rodney gave me the copy.
Checks and.
Yep.
Okay.
So I So I
Which one did they extend till September? Is that the, the? I just got an email with for an extension till.
Yeah, that's another ninety days on the closeout of that.
Okay.
So I I have a question on the state reporting system. Do we, as the commission, need to contact someone at the state?
No, it's not the state. It's, it's, this is a federal reporting system that keeps going down. We get updates from Danny Brandon, who's the coordinator for the state of Nevada. Eight is down again today. Two days later, eight's back up and Sean, I mean, you're saying frustration. He, he's frustrated too. It's a new system, much like the FEMA go on, on the grant applications now. It's, it's all, there's a call of FEMA go and then they're do Zoom grants and there's just a lot of fine tuning, I'd say they have to do with it. It's just down a lot.
And they're not based around here at all, right?
Oh, negative. They're back in Maryland.
Yeah, back somewhere. They don't even know where we are.
Right. They're in Emesford.
Yeah.
And Mike, if you take care of that pool pack grant for Emily, I'd really appreciate it because that will help us with our budget.
Sure. Okay, anything else?
Very good. Thank you. Looking forward to having that meeting with the group whenever they get.
We have a couple of minutes before we have a nine fifteen.
You, you.
To just hold off for a bit? Okay. Part of the extension, not here. What? I saw you walk in.
Yes. So I wanted to hand out, you guys got it, I think via email, but there's a new flyer.
I did.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright, so you've probably seen that we have sixteen plus up and going now. Dog I'm super excited about. That one starts in May, but that'll be a lot of fun. I think she's got a lot of things planned. We have some clinics with that such as cattle dog and sniffing. Oh, the drugs and stuff, which she called it sniffing, but she wants to do to like take them on a walk and get them used to just being around other dogs and obstacles that you'll find when you walk around the city and that kind of stuff. But it's Samira Dyer that's going to be the leader. And she's taken tons of dog training courses. So she'll be a great aspect. And then I don't know if you've seen the page that's behind the calendar, that protect yourself and your family. Um, that's a fundraising that self-defense is going to do because they've bought things like mats and training dummies and punching bags and stuff like that, which there was some funds in there, but we hate to deplete them completely. So that's their way of doing a fundraiser to hopefully teach the adults as well. Then Boom is leader for that and he worked as an EMT in some pretty sketchy neighborhoods. So he has on-the-job training. He's had military training. He's had his father was in law enforcement, so he has that experience. Um, and then he's taking a class from a ex-marine that teaches the FBI and the CIA self-defense. So he has quite a bit of knowledge in this area and he's been great with the kids and I love how age appropriate is for the kids, but I'm also excited to see the next level when he does this adult class. And that's twenty bucks a person and they'll be door prizes.
So for the adults, if you're older, I mean, can you just do what you can do?
Oh, heck yeah. He's not going to wish you. You, you might be the one that tears up a little punch.
I have no idea, but you know, seriously, I don't.
Yeah, no, I think just the context and being able to share it with your kids or your grandkids and that kind of stuff. I think there's a lot of information that'll be great for this community to have. I think it's something that doesn't get shared like it should. And he's so passionate about teaching, so it tends to make you really pay attention to him.
That's great.
Um, I have, I'm working on getting it nailed down, but we're going to do an exhibit around frontier days at the community center. Um, since there's a possibility of not having our four H state expo, I really wanted to give them the opportunity to have their stuff exhibited twice. Plus it's something I feel like four H should be doing during frontier days is that kind of stuff. So I'm going to try to model it after the tri-count fair, some of those categories. It'll be open to adults too. It won't be closed to just four H kids. Um, so it'll be similar to tri-county fair. Um, I don't know if expo will happen. They're not getting enough volunteers. Tri-county fair is supposed to be a thing, so we'll be able to exhibit stuff in that. Um, the livestock show is May second, so
Yes.
I hopefully you guys can come. So self-defense and then livestock. The same weekend.
Okay, well, that's all right.
And I don't know if you guys have any questions. Snow skiing was amazing. Those kids learned tons. The athleticism it takes to do that. I did not realize because this is the first time I have skied. But they just moved up levels. I know Lily Reynolds went to like a six. Um, Jacob moved up to a four in both snowboarding and skiing, but it was a great opportunity, especially without having winter sports for so, some of those kids to really stay in shape because it's, it's pretty extensive. And then Sky Tavern's amazing. They do those lessons, so they really learn a lot. Too. It's not like they're just going and having fun. They actually learn a lot.
Yeah, it is. Emery did that when she was really young.
I know. It's cool. That club used to be resurrected. I was really lucky to trace who was willing to do that. And it sounds like Kelly Brooks might step up for next year. There's a possibility with a lot of those kids doing wrestling that they're not going to be able to ski, but there's still, I think, enough interest that will keep that club going. So.
You've done an amazing job really with all the clubs and getting people involved.
Well, I'm passionate about it, so it makes it easy. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Shooting sport should be starting back up too. They're looking at May. Brady and Danny have moved back and they had already had their archery certification. They're trying to get signed up to go to Elko and get their muzzleloader and their shotgun as well, which we can do clinics. Right now, the trap club has kind of picked up a lot of those kids that are normally doing that, so they are still doing things. So it's not like they're completely in the dark because there's about twenty-five kids that aren't in other things that are interested in that. Finding shotgun shells. Yeah, that's, that's huge. I know Steve reached out to, I think Winchester. And they said they're doing the best they can, but they didn't offer any free stuff.
Of course.
So, um, there's a quilt. I don't know if you guys have seen it. Doris Bridges made it. It's absolutely gorgeous. We handed out tickets to the kids in sewing last Friday, so they're selling tickets. Um, we handed out tickets to the kids in sewing last Friday, so they're selling tickets to buy. It was in the flyer. It's made of all kinds of.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I guess I haven't seen my granddaughter since last Friday, so.
Right. Um, I, I am not gonna lie, I cried when she brought it in because it's a lot of work and it's absolutely gorgeous. She picks some pretty cool fabrics. Um, photography club is learning so much at like a college level, like Andy's really stepped up this game with that and Chelsea keeps it super fun. She took him on a field trip over to her studio. So, um, hopefully they'll have some really cool things to exhibit. I'm super excited to see their work and when they do their share at the beginning of a class, it's so much fun to see what they take pictures of and, and from their view and just the, how much they're learning each time too. Um, like I said, the livestock show is on May. Um, we do have ten steers, so it's gonna be a lot of beef. Um, so spread the word. They're gonna work on their buyers invites and stuff, um, this week. Am I missing any other hot air balloon? Did you guys see Pat Owen's new balloon?
Yes.
It's so cool. It looks like our state flag. So, and that club's really grown. There's an offer for those kids to go to a hot air balloon camp in Tahoe. So we're gonna really push, especially our older members to do that. Um, in May, we're doing an open, because I don't know if you know, there's always been world demonstrations through four H. It was kind of limited to the cash prizes to just livestock. Well, they're doing their livestock one, two, but then Burrows is also offering to do it for all clubs. So in May, cooking, sewing, all of those clubs have the ability to come compete in those three categories, the junior, intermediate and senior for cash prizes. So we can keep promoting that world demonstration, because I think it's super important. It really helps you get jobs, helps you talk in front of people and, and I think it's a great skill that I would love to keep, um, honing in on for, for each members.
It also helps with, um, F F A.
It definitely, and I'm, I'm excited, I guess, I don't know if I can say or not, but they've hired someone that has actually went to F F A Nationals.
Starly Pro?
I don't know which, which ones, but she's been to the national competitions, so I'm hoping that we can create a relationship that keeps both, because I feel like they should complement each other as much as possible, like Green Chasman do. Um, also, I don't know if you know, every single club except for community has, um, well, the community has officers, but they all do their demonstrations, but they all have officers, you know, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, historian. And next year, you know, we're really gonna hone in on the treasurer's learning some stuff. It's just with starting up with all these new clubs, we haven't divided out all the money, so we don't have it completely ready. But, um, they went and watched one of our meetings and watched Joe Krim do a meeting so that they could learn kind of what it's supposed to look like, but we're really enforcing that parliamentary procedure in each club and learning those opposite skills and and, and learning the language most of all and, and doing it gently, like I'm trying not to overwhelm them, trying to keep it simple to begin with and then add to it. We'll do a clinic next year for the officers so they can practice it and, and get better at it. But just so you know, each club, it's not just livestock. Each club has officers that are elected and do their jobs.
Good.
The, the sewing club historian did write her paper. Did she bring it to you?
She hasn't brought it to me. Yeah, I really hung down this last month on historians.
She hasn't been, but I was gone on Friday, so.
I'm so excited to read it.
Tweaking.
Right. Garden Club, um, the end of May will be selling starter plants. Um, they started them last month. Um, they planted them and then not moved them to pots and Lisa Alvelos is, is working on getting her stuff done. She's moved her supplies. We did tree grafting last Friday, or they did. Um, and so we'll have some apple trees to sell too. So I'm super excited.
So I'm sorry, when is that gonna be?
I haven't said exact date yet, but it'll be in May. They kind of vote on it at their meetings on when they're gonna have them and I still need, I talked to Big Art, but I need to set a date with them. And I've reached out to Workmans to maybe get some plants that we don't have, because I'm trying to sell things that Big Art doesn't have, so I compliment them. So I'm not taking away from their business, but I'm hopefully, you know, you go get the tomatoes from them and then you get like the broccoli and the cauliflower and whatever else from us and, and hopefully potting soil from them. And I also reached out to Laird. I don't know if he'd gotten any starters, but I thought F F A can join us because I don't mind sharing the time and the space and the adult chat room part, so. So there's that too and at the end of May. Um, Arts and Crafts, Leon is doing an amazing job. They're gonna be painting Easter rocks on the tin. I think horse clubs doing their certification here, um, on the twenty-third. They all have to have written certification and then they have to have a certification on the horse itself. And like shooting sports, those two clubs are your highest as far as restrictions on certification on your leaders and certification on the members. And it's because, um, they've always had a really high safety capability, like there, people don't get hurt very often, so. So it makes it harder when you have fifth generation ranchers that have to go through that, but I feel like the horsemanship, um, things that you don't normally, you think everybody knows, you know, but there's little terms and vocabulary and things, then tricks that they don't know. Um, Matt Shance keeps helping us with that. He's volunteering and that was how he got started and he is amazing with the kids. He's so quiet. So they're learning a lot of skills they wouldn't normally have learned, so. I'm excited for that. They're gonna do trail once they get their certification. They're gonna start with that. They all wanna do jumping. How do you do that in like a year? That one's a lot more. You need to have a pretty good seat.
Good job. Thank you.
Do you have any questions on any of the?
Do you need any more pots for your plants?
I do, if you have more.
We have lots, so.
Good. That was awesome, because I just went through all mine.
Yeah, we have lots.
And then I heard they were talking about the SNAP stuff. I just wanted you to know, because I am seventy-five percent four H, the other twenty-five is the SNAP. The bingo size that I'm teaching at the senior center, I'm also teaching at the nursing home. And that program, um, gives out a newsletter, which is, I think, on the back of your three papers I gave you. But they also are giving out garden kits here pretty soon, so they'll have little little kits that they can take at the nursing home and at the senior center, but since the senior center's part of the county, I thought you'd like to.
That's great.
Good job, thank you. Okay, back. We have a nine fifteen, uh, bid award on it. Yeah. We opened bids yesterday morning. We had two different bids go for it. At first I had thrown away the envelope and I was corrected. I couldn't film it all.
No, I sent Mary back from the street.
Did you have to take one in the trash? No, I didn't have to bid. Just the envelope. Guess I've done that. Oh, throw it all away. Yeah, yeah. So we have two bid applications and this is for, uh, our magnesium chloride program. One of the agencies was in attendance and the other one was. Need to have you submit.
It's, so we've, we've worked with both companies, both companies did have done an acceptable job. It looks like Dustbusters is cheaper.
Yeah.
See any reason not to go with them. It's not a lot.
There's not a lot of difference, but.
Yeah, if, I mean, if there was any other you know, any other reason not to accept a bid, I would say so, but I don't see, um, like I said, they've done acceptable jobs, so. They both met all requirements.
So we have, um, Dustbusters at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ten, is that right?
Yes.
And then Enviro, Enviro Tech Services at one twenty-five, one ninety-four, sixty-nine. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the bid from Dustbusters for one twenty-four, four-ten and that they are the most responsible. Reacted. Did they meet all the qualifications?
Yeah.
That they need all the qualifications. I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? I, motion. With the onboard, yes. Oh, just in time, community center.
No, 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 no.
I mean, um, yeah, economic development. That one, that one.
Yeah, you're fine.
Tom, this is Commissioner Larry Ratley.
We were waiting for you to get here.
Commissioner Carol Shane.
Hi.
Morning commissioners. Morning, I'm sorry it took so long. I think I set an inland speed record.
And our shirts.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking time today.
You're welcome.
So, go for it.
I've been working with, uh, Mr. Adams since two thousand nineteen, um, for an exciting project that I'll let you chat about.
Right, well, good morning. I think you guys have heard a little bit about what we're up to. Um, my name is Tom Adams. I'm the founder and distiller at Seven Tross Distilling Company. We are a, a micro distillery uh, that we, we have a distillery in a restaurant in Reno and we've been, uh, working at this business since two thousand and twelve. Happy to say the first, uh, licensed distillery in the Great Basin since around eighteen seventy-seven. Uh, we make whiskey, vodka, gin, and we, prior to the pandemic, we're growing like crazy, uh, and have been, have been kicking tires about how we can have a sustainable, uh, growth program. Uh, started looking around in different parts of Northern Nevada. I started looking at things like water quality and available real estate and whatnot, and, uh, we met Heidi here and, and really started getting a little more serious in, in, uh, August of two thousand and nineteen about Love Lock. Uh, we, we have explored a number of properties that are around or were available during that timeframe and had begun conversations with some of the landowners in earnest. Fast forward a little while, we've, we've actually kind of sat it out a little bit for pandemic reasons, but we are back on that force and are very, very interested in, uh, expanding and growing our business, uh, in, in this town. So that, that's what brings us here today. We, we've identified a property that as, as you guys all know, there's a little bit of history back and forth with, um, right across the street here. We're, we're quite interested in the old windmill building. It has a lot of infrastructure that we feel, uh, we can repurpose to our needs and, uh, our, our goal for any kind of, uh, any kind of program out in, in Love Lock here would be to make a production style facility. Uh, not a small distillery by any means. We're looking at building something that's gonna be capable of making about a thousand barrels of bourbon on an annual basis for a fair amount for us. Um, and, and with that, all of the, all the things that come with, you know, building and owning a community-based business. So we're looking at some local, uh, local, uh, employment. Uh, probably consuming upwards of a hun, of a thousand tons of locally grown grain on an annual basis here. And then, uh, and then hosting, obviously, uh, for a tourist-based business, so we feel that, uh, we would certainly attract, uh, a number of Alco tourists, you like, oh, to the area. So that, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Um, we are a family-owned business. We are not a corporation. Uh, my wife, myself and my brother owns a little bit of interest in our business. We completely intend to keep it that way. So with that, uh, I know you guys have a lot of questions. Um, we'd just like to open the conversation and then talk about acquisition of, of the window. Have you looked at other sites in Love Lock? We've looked at a lot.
The, 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 the location, um, fire suppression, that's quite honestly a big determining factor. And, um, so we have met with Rusty Keel numerous times regarding fire suppression and this is one of the best slots for that, um, because there is fire suppression both in Cornell and in Dartmouth.
Well, we'll likely have to tie into both water lines to make the minimum fire.
And also half acre. You needed a half acre minimum.
Roughly, yeah.
So.
Roughly a half acre. Yeah. Yep.
So those are huge determining factors.
Yeah, and as you know, we have a bit of a conflict. Uh, that's why I'm asking if you've looked at different sites. Uh, I mean, I can think of a couple of them. I know you've looked at the burn site, which is, you have to be cleaned up, is, is coming soon. Uh, but you weren't in favor of that one? Not, not, I wouldn't say not in favor. This already has some infrastructure that I think that we can reuse. Um, this already has two, two water lines to the site. We have discussed with Southwest Gas, they actually have the appropriately sized gas feeder to this. This was already a, a large commercial operation, restaurant and whatnot, so all of those infrastructure things that we would need to actually start our business are mostly there, they're within a stone's throw. Uh, and the big one is fire suppression. So we are gonna have, uh, with the distillery, of course, we're, we're talking about manufacturing a flammable, not necessarily volatile, but flammable product, and so we have higher than, uh, normal fire flow requirements. We will have, um, we will have a designated, uh, it's called an H-one control area in there and that requires Yeah. Significant control.
And we had also invited, um, uh, Rodney, uh, Mcox to a meeting, um, as well as, uh, Rusty to talk about fire flow.
Is that why you came back, Rodney?
Yeah, I, well, I didn't know too much about what was, they were gonna do today, but I did go to that meeting and I'll tell you what would they have planned. I don't know if you've seen any of the pictures of it or not, but it's, it would definitely, uh, be something that you would want in your.
We do have a design concept. We do have an architect on board and things like that. So to, today, my mind is a, is a first step towards that. We will be, uh, obviously with permission, we would be looking at redesigning the windmill building to emulate an old-fashioned mining mill building, coordinated in all that silos and whatnot, there will be.
So what is your timeframe on this? If we were to agree to sell you the property, how long out are you looking at doing this development?
So, so, uh, we are, uh, as, as I put for in our, in our letter, we're actually in a fundraising, uh, mode right now. We have the finances available today to acquire the building, assuming we can come to terms with pricing. And to begin. As soon as what? Uh, assuming we can come to terms on, on pricing. Uh, at, at the, the second we close, we have the funds available to, to begin, um, rehabilitation of the structure. So, so within a year's time, probably less than eight or nine months, we will completely change the curb appeal of the building. And during that timeframe though, uh, for full disclosure, we still have to raise a whole bunch of money uh, to be able to acquire equipment and operating capital. It's a significant investment. Uh, we started on that path. We're having some success, a little more after COVID than before, but honestly, some, you know, everything happens for a reason.
Okay, good. Well, it definitely would be a benefit to the community without any question. Um, where are we on the property next to the church?
So, uh, we have Kyle Insurance and I was actually texting the property owner during this meeting. He's available to come out on Friday and sign the deed. Now we can, uh, give the, the purchase amount, so it's just a matter of drafting the deed and having him sign it and then we can record it.
So then what we would have to do if we agreed to this, we'd have to eventually build our law enforcement center on, uh, more or less existing, uh, footprint plus the additional property. So, and I know the county would wanna be made whole, like whatever we we paid for the property and then any other costs that were involved. Um, I know we would at least have, have that reimbursed.
We expect nothing else.
Yeah, and, um, so I mean, that's, I'm not looking at making a profit, but just making us whole so that we didn't lose anything.
And I think it's important to realize this is being a tourism-based business that our community constantly throughout the years, any, um, work, work, you know, working sessions that we've had, we've always said we need to get people off the highway and across the train tracks.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Yeah.
We, prior to COVID, we, we would, uh, have the benefit of thousands of tourists on an annual basis, so we expect nothing less here.
Yeah, no, it would be a good, um, anchor. It would be a good anchor for other businesses.
I also called, uh, Tonopah Brewery, uh, well, the Tonopah Chamber of Commerce, because they have a micro brewery down there and I was just kind of curious to see how they were doing. Uh, I don't have any numbers, um, but it, uh, what the Chamber of Commerce said was that it was very popular that, um, travelers tended to input these type of, uh, stops into their GPS and, and, and move along. Um, they were always busy. Um, they've opened a second location in Virginia City. They say that, uh, the Tonopah Brewery has added. They say that the Tonopah Brewery has added to the beauty of the community, as well as they have expanded to add barbecue offerings as well. So that's a small community out in the middle of Nevada. So they're very pleased with theirs. And we're on a major thoroughfare, so that might be helpful as well.
The only concern I would have would be if we agreed, you know, to sell the property. The other concern would be that it just doesn't sit there forever, you know, and doesn't get developed. Shayla's beauty shop.
Horrible property for thirty years.
Yeah.
Right.
It's my front window, my front. And it needs, something needs to happen to it.
Yeah, I agree. And I, you know, my, my response to that is I, I agree with that. I don't want to get into a situation where we just buy it. And it's saying forever, it's just, is a junk collector. So we will be putting our own family resources to work on that, and that's definitely have a sense of urgency in, in making sure that that's done properly and timely.
So we are in the process of working with the architect to design our detention facility. That, that building takes up this whole lot. So the building as the concept we have right now will not fit where you're talking about putting it. So we do have a conflict there we have to resolve. And I'm not looking at resolving that today.
Well. I think, I think existing properties that we will have, we can look at two story building.
I would agree.
And we can, we can redesign everything. I would hate to hinder economic development through the community after.
And I, I understand that completely except, and, and what I have to look at is that property was up for foreclosure bid. We were the only bidders. We purchased the property. We started, we have started the process of designing a building to go on the property. Now, like I say, we meet tomorrow to further look at that concept. And that building will not fit on the three lots that we have by the church.
It was my understanding when we purchased this property that we all knew that, that Seven Trops was looking at it, and it was discussed that if they wanted the land that it could be available for sale.
So what that, what that does is it puts us in to look back to the thing we've been doing for several years and looking for a lot.
We can't afford the jail right now anyway, Larry.
You still have to have a lot.
We do have the lot.
So, so what I would recommend is you're meeting with the architects tomorrow. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What time? In the morning or?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. We can't all meet as Commissioners, because it's not agendaized. But I think at that point in time, we need to talk to the architects instead about the existing properties that we have and what can be done. We don't have the funds for a $12 million or $15 million detention center. And we, I think that we can design what needs to be done on the existing footprint that we have.
And you're an architect, right?
We're not gonna.
So I'm, I'm not an architect, but I'm, I'm a common sense rational individual and, and sometimes. But I think that we need to really, you know, consider this, and we need to be looking at our other alternatives as well.
So there are, there are two options, two property options on which to build the detention facility. And there are several variables at play that have yet to be determined, such as the county figuring out a way to fund the detention facility. And also whether Seven Trops Distillery is going to come up with the financing to not only buy the mobile property, but also renovate it. So given that some things are in play, and everybody has, I mean, the county has a great opportunity, Seven Trops has a great opportunity. Why not enter into an intent agreement to purchase the property, contingent on some of those variables coming to fruition, such as Seven Trops getting financing or the county to get out a way that, how it's going to pay for the detention facility. And in the meantime, have the architect make two rough proposals, one for the detention facility to go on the windmill property. And also cover the existing footprint, or as an alternative, put the detention facility of the existing footprint with the two additional properties that are south of it.
And, and that's what I was going to suggest only part of it was that we authorize you as the DA to work with them and come up with a plan. The other is that I would want the stipulation in there that the development doesn't get stalled for years, you know, that it's, it's done in a timely manner.
Sure.
I have a question for the mayor. Mike, the covered wagon motel, I think that's what it's called, the one. Yeah, by Safeway, is that for sale? Is that for?
I cannot answer that question. I don't know if one of those properties are for sale. But when I, when I first met Mr. Adams, I thought he's planning a very interesting plan, could help the community. Because when you look at the community, they have a very small footprint for business opportunities and stuff in there. And ever since I've been in this community, after the freeway opened up, it's always been, you need to get some business that could drag people across the tracks. And they would be able to land somebody that could have that potential to bring people into the tracks. Right now, they come up with that one or six stop at either Chevron or Golden Gate across the street from McDonald's and Portisops and go from there. So I, I think this is a golden opportunity. It could, it will help downtown businesses that are already there. With it coming on, it puts it back onto the tax rolls where it is, helps build the city and the county tax wise. Not knowing what that sales tax it will generate for us, but that's, that's unknown, which is a win-win. So I've been very supportive of this whole project ever since we got started a couple of years ago. And I know we looked at other communities and stuff, and the name's, name's Seven Trops. They get a long better.
Oh, yeah.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, no, that would be, that would be awesome.
So and then it would help some of our local farmers. He's already been buying some corn and grain from local farmers. If he can increase production, that will be more than, could be bought locally and stuff. So it's a win-win for several people. Plus it creates, I believe it is a former thing, it's about fourteen employees, and I imagine they pay, are paid fairly well. So that brings fourteen people to town. And at one time, he did have part of his staff wanted to relocate. So that would bring new people and create some housing in the community. So I, I think it's a very viable project, and I think he's got his stuff together now. COVID screws everybody on everything. We're all well aware of that. And I think that was really put a kink in the financing, because people didn't want to know what they wanted to do. And when you're dealing with some other entities that are government entities in help, they have the same problem. They go get money and they ever shut down. So you know, I think nothing measured, nothing gained here. And I know one of the things we looked at was fire flow. And his contractor was very concerned about that because, because of the nature of the business. And he did bring some experts in out of Las Vegas, and they met with Rusty from Lovelock Meadows and Rodney from the Fire Department in Reno, along with Mark, who is our joint plan and building person. And talked about fire protection, and that area is the best place to put it for fire protection. You don't want to ever think about fire, but if it does happen, because the water lines for fire hangers on Dartmouth and the ones on Cornell are separate systems, so you have good water flow. So, and then some of the utility, most of the utilities are there big enough to be more ready to use because of being a long restroom.
Yeah.
And I realize the county, the county can look at that. But my personal opinion, I think the jail could be elsewhere. You know, and the city, if the city is still in the offer of giving you all of that long Amherst there too, but we'll look at. So, so you know, it's, it's your hands. We, we talked to Mr. Adams about whether the city could buy it. My legal counsel said we could, but we needed three weeks to do the proper advertising, to book the money and stuff. So in the fourteen day frame, frame that we had working, could not work for us. So. Yeah.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So if you're ready for the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go for it.
I'll make the motion that we enter into a letter of intent for Tom Adams and the Seven Trops Distillery to purchase the windmill property that we have located at 925 Cornell and 950 Dartmouth Avenue. And that the DA worked out the details, much of what we've discussed at this time. I think it's a very, very win-win situation for the, the county and the community. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote no. Motion passed.
And we, I appreciate you coming and finally meeting you. I, I've heard the name and I, it's been something that's been on the burner for a long time and we're, we're excited. I hope everything works out.
Okay, oh, I, I do too. Yeah, thanks, thanks for the consideration. We're really, really excited, a little bit terrified, but that's good.
Listen, if you enter into a big venture like this, you know, yeah.
I'm looking forward to a new.
Something across the street.
Something new. Great. Thanks so much, guys.
I thank you for all.
You have some more stuff.
I do. Can I walk outside for a few minutes and come back when you?
Okay, so we'll go on and then.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Commissioners have a great day. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Justin, do you have much to report?
I'm get this switched over here. Okay. Your production director has to be on the production.
That's another one of your titles. Public information officer.
So it's been a very busy few weeks. We've had a few, we've had some workstation replacements that we've done for a couple of departments. We've had several users being onboarded and off boarded. I've been I, I've had a couple of meetings with internet, an internet service provider that's working on coming into the area. They, they wanted a, they're they actually have a point of presence, basically just a tower that they put on, put up on Chevron. So they're, they're gonna, they're bringing fiber to that plane, and then they're using a newer wireless internet, fixed wireless internet technology runs on the CBRS band. That's, that's base, basically it works the same principle, on print, same principle as cellular data towers. They were, they were interested in providing the proposal to bring internet to our county facilities. So I, I have the initial proposal. I'm also trying to make contact with a couple of other potential providers to bring to, to, to try and bring some sort of better internet for our employees and possibly expand that, get, get that foothold where it could be expanded for the whole community. The, the provider that I've been talking to, Sky Fiber, their, their proposal is for 100 megabits down and 100 megabits up, which is far and away much better than what we currently have available. So I've also been working on the internet upgrade for the library, which has gone very, very well. The fiber to the library is actually now lit. New, most, most of the new equipment is in place. Right, basically right now, I'm just waiting for a cable, a fiber optic cable to go from the switch to the firewall, the new firewall in the library. Our preliminary testing has been wonderful. Much, much faster. We're, we're talking latency sometimes in the single digits. So in less than a tenth of a second, we get a response back to, to a request for a website. That's amazing.
Yes, it is.
So, so. Yeah. Which, and not, not in case, and not for free too. So pretty, pretty much, I'm just waiting for that cable. We'll do some final testing and configuration, and then we'll cut over the, the library computers, both the public computers and the, the staff computers. So once that, once that's done, the library will have the best internet in town outside of maybe some enterprise solutions that businesses are paying for. So.
Well, it's the same as the school district though, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so the school district.
Yeah, but the library is spreading their connection out over fewer endpoints than the school district. You know, their, their, their computer lab alone is like, what, twenty, twenty-five computers, and the library is ten? So. Yeah. I, I, I did ask Inchi about, hey, could we maybe spread that across the street a little bit? They're like, well.
Or we'll all sit in the parking lot.
Uh, yeah, so that's, that's what's been going on. Continuing to move forward on projects.
Good job.
Yeah, the other thing I had on the agenda for me was establishing a county email for David Skelton.
Do you have a recommendation?
So my recommendation, and I, I would, I would want Bryce's opinion on this as well, is that we we have Mr. Skelton sign some sort of document saying that he will abide by the county's IT policies. That's my main concern with having a non-employee given access to any of our systems, no matter how seemingly, seemingly mine. Because it's always the minor things that come back to bite you.
Yeah.
So at the very minimum, I would, I would ask that he be legally bound to abide by our IT policies.
Well, unless he does.
If he doesn't, then we don't give him access to any of our systems whatsoever.
But if he violates it and has access, what he's saying is we can't terminate him as an employee.
Right. And, and that's, that's why I wanted other opinions on.
Is there any other way that we can work this? Like, right now, we have the emergency manager that has an email address. Couldn't, couldn't we set something? I, I don't even know how to do this.
Can't he just be set up with like a just any random email that he uses exclusively for that type of type of business he's transacting?
The way, the, the way it would be set up is so every, every department has a generic email address, like district attorney@purgingcountymb.gov. And then every employee has a direct email. For Mr. Skelton, it would be the same way. He would have dskelton@purgingcountymb.gov. And it would be an Office 365 account. It would be the, it would be the online tools only. So we went and providing him with a copy of, a desktop copy of Office, or just the email and the online tools when we're online, et cetera. But because we are giving him an account, there is a certain base level of access he has.
Why does he need that? Why does he need a county email if he's not a county employee?
Yeah, and, and my concern is that what he's doing for iPods with the emergency alert system. He did basically on his own because he, he wanted to help and do that, but it should really be going through either the sheriff or the emergency manager. And I'm wondering if, why can't the emergency manager get the emails and then if it's something that's related to him? Forward them to him at his private, I don't know. I, I, I don't. I, I see the issues and I, I don't know that it's a good idea at this point.
I don't think it's a good idea, I.
Then, um, I mean, what if we have somebody else that volunteers to do something and then they want another email address and, and that sort of thing? So I would be hesitant to go forward with it. And I think his concern was he wanted that official capacity because he's doing the alert. Um, broadcasting and stuff, but I mean, he's not really an official person of the.
And I would, I would, I would agree with that. Um, I, I have, I have nothing against Francisco.
No, and I don't either.
I think he does a lot of great work for us, but.
He does.
Um. My, my, my concern is that he isn't an employee and he's not bound by our policies and we have no way to address that.
So at this point, I would be hesitant to do this, or to do, and then I believe he also wanted access to the community center emails. Is that?
Well, that would, that would be something different and that, that I believe is actually under the community center section where, that, that we haven't actually gotten to yet. Um, where he would be appointed as the acting interim community center director until the position is filled. Um.
But by doing that, then he would need access to that.
Right.
I mean.
And at, at that, at that point, wouldn't he be an employee?
Yeah.
If he was a, if he was the community.
No, he's not an employee.
Yeah. So I'm, you know, I'm hesitant to do any of that right now and then. Um, when we get to the community center, we can talk about that more, but as far as the emails, I think he's just gonna have to continue with his own personal email.
I, I would recommend, again, even against that, having any county business go through a system that we don't have control over. Which kinda, which kinda puts us in a, in a hard spot because he's been doing all this stuff for us already.
So. I'm sorry. No one told him. So should it maybe all the emails should go through the emergency manager or the sheriff? Because you're not gonna put out a public alert without the sheriff's approval.
No.
I mean, and he would not, I mean, I know he would be, not do that, but why wouldn't any correspondence from the state go through either? And then she's put sheriff or emergency manager.
I would, I would think those would, from. From a network security and IT perspective. Those would make sense. Um, the, the sheriff, the under sheriff or, or somebody within his office that he designates. Um, and the emergency operations manager or the director of emergency manag- management. Uh, I think those are both reasonable, um, individuals to have that access. Um. Yeah.
So that's my thought process at, at this moment, so, but I open it up. You know, we appreciate him taking the classes and all that, but.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we're at, at a point where we need to, uh, grant a, a non-employee access.
The only, the only other option I can think of is to create a public information officer position.
Yeah, we kinda touched on.
Bryce is shaking his head.
We don't have.
And I, I would, I would. I, I, if we were a bigger county, I think.
Yeah.
That would be more appropriate, but I mean, that, that's, it's really all of our options there.
Yeah.
Okay. We're not gonna do that.
All right.
Yeah. You're good?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen asked.
I was already on, on top of that, thank you.
Sorry.
So, uh, we have a ten o'clock for you, but we're gonna go to a proclamation and awards first, if that's okay. Thank you. So we have proclamation and awards. Uh, we have a, uh. A presentation, actually a couple of them that are here, but not think so. Years of service, Galen Reese, ten years. Of retirement. For Leslie Stewart and we have, uh, Beth Reed and Glenn Reed. Uh, permission for, uh, uh, county government month. So let's start with an award for a retiree. Yes.
You see your grave behind that mask. She's.
I can't get to her.
Yeah.
Can I have all four of you step this way a little bit so we can get you from behind the door?
Oh, so which way do you want it?
So, yeah. Brian. A little bit more.
Hey, Shaila, wait a minute.
So we, we have this. I think it looks great. Uh, go ahead, appreciation for your many years of service in Pershing County and congratulations.
Thank you.
I think. And now we have a meeting. And Beth Reed has four one years and Ollie has twelve point six years.
They've already successfully moved to.
If all.
They didn't waste any time, no.
Okay, ten o'clock, come on. You're fine, okay.
You're retired.
So we have an update on matters, uh.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, Mark Collins. Um, actually, you have the end of month in front of you. Um, we do have a, we will have a planning session this evening for a boundary line adjustment, that's it.
All the presentation. There, I feel.
Um, yes, it, it, with that reoccurring, I should, uh, prevent to discuss. There are limited. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Let's have questions on the end of month report. Gaming and business license or a catch.
You've been busy.
Yes, yes.
With a new employee too and everything. How's, how's, how are things going?
Yeah, actually, he's, he's, he's doing really well.
So the first thing, first thing on there is, uh. Review and possible approval for, uh, a proposal submitted by Stan Tech.
Yeah, I, I know she's, she, she said she's gonna be on the line if you guys have any questions.
Oh, is anybody on there?
Is Cynthia from Stan Tech, is she on?
I know everybody by that.
You should have been in front of you, the, the, uh, quote from. Yep.
And this was something we've been working on for a long time that we need to redo the development plan and then also in the master plan to get the water resource plan.
And not to interrupt you.
No, please.
I got ahold of Brent from Far West. Um, finally after two and a half weeks, he emailed me back. Um, and the water resource plan has not been submitted to them to, for, for updates, so, um, I asked him if he can do that.
Thank you.
It should be, we should be getting that started. Sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 thank you. So it was never submitted to them?
No, uh, when the, when the new legislative updates came out, it was, nobody asked them to.
To update.
Oh.
So I, I'm sorry, I can't find it right now because I'm not in the right spot, but, um. Her quote was, I think, sixty.
Sixty or two hundred.
Two hundred. And then, uh. And she will hold different meetings and, and, and get this all done for us. So. I think we have enough in the budget to pay half of it this year and half next.
Yeah, we won't, we won't have to pay anything until it's done.
Till it's done.
Until.
Until, until, until actually, we'll have to, in, in here, um, if, if this is agreed upon. She'll send us a, um, she'll email us a, um, kind of like a, a, a contract. It's a, it's a standard Stan Tech contract and then. Do that, and then we won't, we won't have to pay anything until we're actually done.
Okay. So I think this is a great thing and if you're ready for motion, I will make a motion that would go ahead with the proposal, um, for Stan Tech Engineering for sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye, motion.
Thank you. I will let her know this afternoon.
Yeah, this is awesome. Thank you for coordinating all that and Rain is raising her hand.
James, can we get together this Saturday? I wanna make sure that this is gonna be up for July, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need to make sure we have enough in the budget because I pretty much get close to being.
Okay, yeah.
Anyway, thank you for all your work on getting this arranged.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the next one up is continued review and presentation of information, uh, reference, uh, frost line depth. I think we've been here before.
Yes, we have.
Yes.
So, um, before you is, is, um, a summary of the research and I'll just, um, point out the, the major. Turning points here. March third, uh, Mark Campbell at Aspen raised the issue of having the frost depth at Pershing County set at thirty-six is unnecessary and costly. Pointed out in jurisdictions west, Pershing County use twenty-four inches. Uh, he also mentioned during that meeting that there was a project held up because of footings and, um. Counsel asked me to look into that and see if we could get that going after several attempts. Of contacting the council, we weren't able to figure out which project that, that was. So. Um. Further, we, we looked through the, um. The issue and the research is that, um. Uh, the frost depth for thirty-six inches has been the construction standard for a number of years in Pershing County. It's usual for a building department to establish the frost test standard within a particular jurisdiction. Elko, for instance, publishes their frost depth to maximum of thirty-six inches. I, I attached that, um, Elko's. Building code to the last three pages and if you turn to the very last page, you'll see a summary of the data for Elko. And you'll note there that the frost depth is set to thirty-six inches maximum. Or I'm sorry, thirty-six inches minimum. So. Um. But let's continue. Um, the frost depth, uh, is a point at which the moisture present in the soil is expected to freeze. Placing the bottom of a footing below the frost depth is construction standard to avoid footed erosion. That's just the reason we're doing it. Um, in looking why we established this depth, there were two things that were linked. One of them was the frost depth and the other was expansive soils. Um, there are areas in the county above five thousand feet where frost depths of thirty-six inches are justified in the valleys where frost depth of twenty-four would work. There is a case of expansive soils in these valleys that need to be addressed. Um, lacking local soils data investigation submitted with the permit, a prescriptive message of thirty-six inches was adopted. So we asked people to give us a thirty-six inch depth without any soil information. Obviously, if they gave us soil information and they designed, they can design with us whatever they want. I've talked with structural engineers, civil engineers, other building officials. And, um, we've come to the idea that this twenty-four inches of, of depth would be okay in the valleys and most of Pershing County would follow that. Um. Uh, one of the things we wanna do is within expansive soils. This idea of putting, um, the depth of the footings down to, to mitigate expansive soils. Structural engineers really don't like that. They really wanna see you excavate out and put a solid, competent fill underneath there that they can put the concrete on top of so things don't move. Okay? So, um, and so there's a Dutch letter here provided from, that, when they design a project, they either want the soils report through the design. Or they'll put the terms of the, of the design in the drawings and they want a geotech onsite when they do the excavation to make sure that they're reviewing what the work is that's happening. Um, one of the questions that was raised at the last meeting was, are there tables or maps available where we can get this information? Unfortunately, that's not the case. Uh, the soils information is specific to a site and even within a site, it can vary. So we, we know for, for example, right now that the salmon farm, they're actually moving the building around because as they've gone out and done soil samples of various locations on their site. They've realized that it's, it's something necessary for them to, to be able to construct in a proper way. So their, their consultants are looking at actually moving things around to adjust. So we're not even, we're not able to just. Put out blanket statements as far as areas in the county where soils would be of a certain type. We're gonna go back to the idea of where, we're gonna ask for geotechnical report and we're, or, or have somebody review the, the, the soils during construction. This is in the code, it's in the building code. And then actually, if you review the last page of the Elko, they actually go through here and say, we're not even gonna take a, a geotech report that's more than two years old. We want something current on the site and the information. So, um, council asked me to put together a recommendation moving forward. And the recommendation is, is that we adopt the twenty-eighteen code. As part of the code adoption, we would change the frost depth to twenty-four inches below five thousand feet and thirty-six inches above five thousand feet. We would no longer accept the thirty-six inch footing depth in lieu of actual soils reports. Um, and that would be moving forward, just change that adoption. I've also noted that North Nevada, all of North Nevada, most of North Nevada has adopted the twenty-eighteen, including Elko. Um, with the North Nevada amendments. Also, the governor's office energy has adopted statewide the twenty-eighteen ener- energy code. And the Nevada State Fire Marshal has adopted the twenty-eighteen fire code. So we would be, um, in alignment with, with other agencies if we were to adopt the twenty-eighteen code. Currently, we, we're on the twenty-twelve.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'd have to have a, another meeting, another agenda, a, a item to adopt the twenty-eighteen code.
Typically, there would be a meeting of that.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense.
So just clarification for my sake. Um, how does, how would that play out in a practical application, a practical setting? It says that, um, you will no longer accept the thirty-six inch footing depth. But yet the, in the valley, it's gonna be twenty-four inches. So that would have no application in the valley or it would have application in the valley given certain soil conditions.
It would be, it would be countywide that a soils report or geotech would be on site for doing the footings.
For every single footing.
It's in the code, that's the way it's handled.
Okay, that's the two thousand eighteen.
We were, we were a little bit, um. We, we were trying to give some, some leeway in the code to, to allow, um, for this thirty-six inch, um, but in talking to structural engineers. and the and what's in the code today, the twenty-eighteen code, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to to just just try to put a thirty-six inch deep footing to overcome the expansive soils.
So no matter what type, if you're putting footings in, you have to have a soil test.
Correct.
All right.
I talked to.
Is that going to place an economic burden on construction firms and private contractors? That's required in the code?
It is.
And, okay.
It's in the code.
And every municipality in Northern Nevada that's adopted the two thousand eighteen building code has that same requirement.
They have. And if you look at the last page of the Elko requirements, they actually call out for a geotechnical report.
On every single, every time footage is reported.
Now, we've mentioned at the last meeting, if it's a subdivision and there's an area that's been tested, one soils report for a subdivision would be an acceptable approach.
But an individual lot, but if one person build it doing their own, that you would need a soils report and then you need a geotech person on site?
No, ma'am, either, either or.
Oh, okay, either or.
So either the soils report is done upfront and then the footings are designed for that based on that soil condition. Or if they wait until they actually start construction, they need a geotech looking at the soils and making sure that they're.
What's the cost of having a geotech?
Or.
What's the cost of the geotech?
It it's it's probably around, what was it like, about two thousand bucks?
So you're adding two thousand dollars to each building built or is it like for this subdivision, is it two thousand dollars total or is it two thousand dollars for each individual building?
It it it's total because if in in a subdivision like that, you could take one geotech report for all of the.
Apply for all of them.
Apply to all of them. But if it's an individual lot.
It's two thousand dollars for even if they want to build a concrete slab? It's two thousand dollars for a soil report?
No, no, no. If it's, if it's a patio or any type of concrete work, flat work, sidewalks, there's, that would not require a soils report. If there's a structure and you build something like a garage.
Not, not just a pad to put a house on.
Right.
Because you have to put a foot in for that.
Right. We have a situation right now where an owner bought a pad, then sold the property and represented to the new owner that they could build a garage on that pad. And we're we're asking them to actually have a structural, look at the pad and see if it can actually support walls. So there's different, this is, this is now, we're just staying within the code. The code says if you build a building, that you need your footings to be able to support it and not erode because of frost or expansive soils. That's it. And if you were doing just flat work or a patio, that would, that would apply.
So anything that needs footings has to have these. It will add a two thousand dollar cost to whatever.
So the the metal buildings, the structural buildings that are sold out of bid in town, some for garages, some.
Maybe like a pole barn, you mean?
Well, it's kind of like a pole barn, but people have bought them for garages, they've bought them for, you know, just buildings to to house things and stuff. So those would require a footing and also the soils report.
Most of the metal buildings have a footing design because they don't want to see the roof. But they don't want to see the footings, the the base of it spread. And so they anchor.
It's not as simple as just putting down a cement pad.
Right, right.
Yeah. And then sometimes for the the structural companies, I think they just, they can just require like cement posts or whatever.
Yeah, probably for the cardboard style, I require at minimum the four corners to be anchored into.
Yeah.
Into that minimum.
Yeah.
But in that case, I mean, even in that, I mean, you still, because they're they're just uttering a they're uttering a hole in four corners for a simple cardboard. That that doesn't require a geotech.
Okay.
If they're excavating a garage foundation, a home foundation, that's that that's the key that triggers that type of.
And it sounds like it has to be more recent than two years.
We're, we're just saying, just noting that Elko has that requirement. We we would take something that's been, you know, be up to change to look at it and say, this is something that is from a relative time and and in in that area. If there's a soil.
What about a geotech report or a soil report for a broad area?
That's what we talked about last time.
That's, that's something that is the the structural engineers say it's it's hard. Look at the salmon farm. They're literally moving things around within their own project boundaries because of the soils conditions that they found in there in just their site. So it's hard to say that you found it in this location and it's going to be the same in this location. So.
Yeah, I just, I just have a concern that for the individual homeowner putting in, you know, a mobile home or whatever, that's a lot of money to come up with. And then you're not giving them the alternative, we would not be giving them the alternative of just doing the thirty-six inch, which also costs money. It's like two thousand here or two thousand here. I mean, it's.
Commissioner, I was tasked with coming back.
No, 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 no. And I'm, I'm not arguing. I'm just, I'm just simply saying, I'm thinking of me and how I do everything on a shoestring, you know, because I don't have a lot of money. And I'm thinking, oh, my gosh.
But if you were to look at Wausau County, Elko County, both sides of this, what are we doing different than them? And we were doing this leniency thing and to be, you have the choice of of deciding how this goes.
Right, right.
Obviously.
Yeah. And I appreciate you doing the research and coming up with this. So it's something that we really. Please, Chair.
In saying that.
You need to identify yourself. I'm sorry.
Somebody's saying, I do, I have a. In other words, you have the task of the engineer. But if you do, if you vote for this today, everybody's foundation, you guys buy a new house and myself, and I wanted a cheaper contract. Your time, your foundation is fifteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Fifteen thousand.
Well.
I go Elko right now, a foundation there is ten thousand dollars more than it is here. Simply because of frost depth and the excavating, we have to do triple breaks. Now you're adding a soils report of two thousand dollars. And that varies, maybe more than that too. Not to mention, just to get an engineer picture of how, good luck. There's none here. There's none. When we have a compaction test on something, we need to. Or Reno, and they charge us five hundred dollars for the test, plus a hundred and seventy-five. Just a trial. And that's just for that. So you're talking per home, fifteen thousand dollars is what I did with what the few.
Oh, okay.
And I do everyone and nobody requires it except for. And all it is, I can tell you, there he was a rubber state. That, we did, we hold, we did, we always take the shovel, puts it in, expects the guard, sends us the letter with the signature, it says you're approved. I've never had one. The same engineers that be talking, they're making the suggestion, or the same engineers are going to make that.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, I don't want to see anything like that where it costs that much more just to build a build or build a house. Just that's you could, we have enough trouble now having people build buildings.
Yeah. People are trying to move out here because it's less, it's, yes, it's not four hundred thousand dollars for a home.
Yeah.
Well, and Mark, I I appreciate you doing the research and everything. And I know you've kind of taken a blow on this as far as people and comments and I I'm not using the right words, but you're doing your job and that's, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't know what we're going to do at this point. We're not going to take any action today, but we sure got to figure this out.
Yeah.
And and be reasonable, you know, in it too.
Yeah.
And and I know we have to be safe at the same time.
And and they can't have it both ways. They can't have their cake and eat it too. So.
Yeah.
One, one thing that was just said though is is kind of misleading. The letter you you see here is stamped by a structural engineer. He doesn't make any money off geotech reports. He just, it's a third, it's a separate entity that goes out and cuts the 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 structural engineer wants to see the building stand up. And he has the liability to make sure that that happens. So he's, he's saying, I want to know that the soils and and the way the the wording that they use when they're talking about this is they want to, they want to know that, you know, you're sitting on competent soils. They want to know that there's there's a a face there that's not going to move as a result of the soils.
If, if they were doing these twenty-four footings and had because it says the clay or salty soils, if they were to put twelve inches of gravel beneath those, would that help?
And just with gravel, you're not going to get a compaction test.
So would it? If you are, if there, you're working in soils like this, wouldn't it be better to do a thirty-six inch footing?
So so changing version counting, that's what they're trying to say that that thirty-six inches is going to be structural, strong. That's not. I mean, they're trusting what it means. The only reason Elko County is thirty-six inches because.
And the frost line.
There's nothing to do. And it's, it's the same. Structurally, they're not. They're not making the death form especially.
So there are, it sounds like there are other counties who have different requirements. You know, it it would be interesting to see what those decisions are based on, whether there are competing opinions from structural engineers who would support that type of determination. And the county wants to, wants to enact a code and follow a code that's going to be safe and is going to ensure structures sound. At the same time, it doesn't want to, it doesn't want to impose a significant financial burden on private contractors, self contractors when that can be avoided. So I I know that the board wanted to have a decision today, but in light of the fact that this information was just prevented and there's really been no in-depth analysis on it, which is hard to do during an open meeting in fifteen minutes. Yeah, maybe the board ought to postpone a decision on this until its next meeting to allow everybody some time to digest this and.
I agree.
Some serious thought. And Mark, thank you very much for your research.
Sure.
Very well done.
Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. Gives us a lot to think about.
Again, it's, it's in the board's hands to decide. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we're moving towards is whether or not it's going to be thirty-six inches to twenty-four inches, right? That's really, and if that twenty-four inches is done, is is that with or without a soils report?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Not unless you guys do.
Isn't that enough?
Anyway, thank you so much.
Okay, I have one more thing before I can get to the museum. Marnie, are you still on there? Marnie or Caitlin?
They just need to mute themselves.
Hi, sorry, Marnie's on her way in now. She was just.
Was that Marnie?
This is, this is Caitlin. Marnie's, Marnie's going to be heading in right now. Thank you. Uh, Marnie just came in.
Those in 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 listening in or are here, we're on item number eight.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi. Hi, thanks so much. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Marnie Benson, Director of Government Affairs for Burning Man. And I want to first say thank you for inviting us here for this agenda item this morning. Burning Man greatly appreciates this opportunity. We haven't seen you all in quite some time. And thank you for having this technology available. And especially we want to welcome Commissioner Hudson. I don't think we've attended a meeting yet and had an item while you've been with us.
Thank you.
Commissioners, it's, it's always a pleasure to work with you towards a safe and successful Black Rock City. As you know, Burning Man Project canceled our event in the Black Rock Desert last year amid the emerging global pandemic. Twenty twenty would have been our thirty-first year in a row in Nevada. We were disappointed to not be able to gather in person, but we made the clear decision to cancel last April as the pandemic was unfolding and worsening. We're all much better informed about COVID nineteen now, about transmission, prevention and treatment. Vaccines have been developed and are being deployed successfully. States are opening up and business is getting back closer to normal. There's certainly cause for optimism. And there's also uncertainty about the timeline for vaccinations and the impact of new variants. I know that you all have been tracking new developments for the past year and you've been prioritizing the health and safety of your community. We too have been tracking new developments and prioritizing the health and safety of our community. It is with a cautious optimism that we have been planning for Black Rock City twenty twenty-one. We took advantage of the year off to dive deeply into event operations, thinking long term. I'm sorry about that. About, sorry. Thinking long, about long-term improvements and efficiencies, preparing for twenty twenty-one and beyond. We submitted our SRP, our Special Recreation Permit Application to BLM, and have met with each of you this winter to update you on our progress. Burning Man Project and Pershing County have a legal agreement whereby Burning Man Project pays Pershing County each year for services, including law enforcement services related to the event. As part of this agreement, Burning Man Project pays Pershing County in three installments. And normally, the first installment is due on April first in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Last year, you extended the deadline for this payment. And we request an extension this year as well. I submitted a letter of request to you all a couple of weeks ago. We expect a decision about Black Rock City by April thirtieth, so we're requesting to submit our first payment to you two weeks after that. I'll pause there and happy to answer any questions.
No, I know, I know you're going through a lot just to get to the point of making your decision whether to hold Burning Man for twenty twenty-one. So I I appreciate that. I know you, what you're going through. So putting off that first payment for a little bit, I understand.
I don't have any questions, Marnie. I I don't have any concerns about extending the deadline or.
Are you okay? The district attorney is okay as well.
I don't have any questions.
So if you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this one-time extension on the first installment payment for Pershing County, to Pershing County for the Burning Man event from the April first date to the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one date.
I will second.
Put a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Marnie.
Thank you, commissioners. It's a pleasure. I'll be speaking with you as soon as we have a decision about the event.
You can answer your phone now.
I've been, I've been sitting by for about an hour and a half, and of course, that's the first phone call I've gotten. I'm, I'm so sorry, but thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. That was my plan. Good morning, Mr. Bendur.
Mr. Ackler. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's just start with the reorganization of the Joint Economic Development and Community Center Board request to split the two boards. Reduction in numbers for the economic development board, if that's all right. So I've had two meetings in the last month. I have not had forum for both of those meetings. Consistently, we have a good core of about six, six members that consistently attend. But when one of them cannot, I cannot make forum. And so that's the, kind of the, the start of where we were. We had at length as a board discussed our, the resolution ordinance, however this board was created. Last year, we, we went over it with fine tooth comb. Did some wordsmithing, submitted that to the district attorney and then submitted it to you. It's kind of tabled and now we're back because we have some serious problems with this.
Okay.
And the number of nine board members is too high for us to make forms.
And also to add to that, just recent makeup of it, one of the positions on there in particular is appointed by subject, not by individual. That individual's attended two meetings in three years. Basically has no interest. And our opinion is, if you don't have any interest, then you're doing that. Quite frankly, time to the chase. And that being the case, we would like to, that to make sure that that's one of the positions as well.
Yeah, you have one vacant one right now, and then this other position. And that position that you're referring to was more because it was combined with the community center. And the four H and everything was with that.
Well, supposedly back in the day.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah.
But what I would recommend is there's several committees that we need to fix as far as forums and different things. Is that we do one ordinance? Because that's what we'd have to do. An ordinance and, and put in those several things, like splitting the board or maybe not even have a community center board any longer. That's but having economic development by itself, changing your board numbers from the
From nine to seven.
Seven, five is doable, but like I said, I have a good core of about six members right now. You know, I, I don't know. I don't know their feelings at this point. They've been a little frustrated that we can't meet, can't do business.
So do you think seven will work or go?
Five, just like Heidi said.
Must have ours is five.
Or seven, seven, I would, nine is too much. Nine is just not working.
Well, nine is too much when you have in essence, three people that don't show up.
Yeah.
Well, one of the positions we haven't had for, I can remember.
And five is a more workable number.
That's what I'm thinking, five instead of seven.
So whatever, you know, when we're we're able to either one of those situations, we just want to get to that point rather quickly. I'm concerned, I hear what you're saying, Carol, but I'm concerned about how long that's going to take. In the meantime, we're not being able to function.
Yes, I sit on that board and I missed a meeting. For budgets and they couldn't have a meeting. I was there last Monday and another board member.
One board member had a workout itch, so they were tied up with a major project. And then the other board member had you know, family things going on that they had to attend to. So of course, family is first for me, so go, I'm on the squad. But in the same vein, we can't get our business done. And, you know.
So I'm concerned about the timeline on this. We try to take this around.
I don't know that we can change that without doing an ordinance revision.
Right.
So we have to do that and introduce an ordinance, which we could do at our next meeting. And then, I mean, it's been this long, it's been terrible, but
We just want to see a progress point because we don't want to be in a position where we can't meet. As you well know, there are a lot of things going on. A lot of things we probably don't know about that are going on, but we can't really discuss. And we need to be able to move forward and we can't do that the way it is right now.
Okay, so we could work on for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's already a revised that was floated and I think there was even a first reading but I could be mistaken. But there's already a draft that reduces the number from nine to seven.
But so if we want to go to five, then you have to redo it?
Yeah, well, yeah. Which is going to take a long answer.
Yeah.
But I think the five is more workable, but then I don't know if you have somebody that's currently on your board that would be offended, you know, or would be willing maybe to attend, but not as an official.
No, we, we talked about that. I mean, I, I've stated in our meeting. I mean, if this is what it takes to do it, I don't know that any of us are obligated or you're obligated to keep us there. If we need to resign and you need to redo the whole thing, hey, still be there. That's what it takes to move this forward so we can do the work that needs to be done. We're willing to do it.
So you do want to reduce it down to five?
Well, that was mentioned, five or seven, you know, I mean.
Because even with seven, four gets you a core.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we've had four consistently.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and honestly, we've had five to six consistently, but
So if you, if we go to seven, then you'd have less, we have less time to get them. Because of what you have to do.
No, no, I don't.
Publish it.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
But if, if you have enough people, well, right now you have one bacon and then you have that one position. So you've got seven firm.
Well, we have somebody else that's in there.
The city, the city, I, I put a, I put a request into the city to look at one other vacant spot that this city appointed with another member that's just not been attending. They voted yesterday to send that person a letter to say, hey, what's your interest and, you know, to respond please so that we can move forward. So.
We're trying to be proactive about this.
Yeah.
So I think what we need to know right now is seven or five. I'm thinking five, but you know, that's just
It doesn't matter to me, quite frankly. I'm speaking for myself as chairman. We haven't talked about whether five or seven. I mean, specifically, we didn't say one or the other. We talked about it. The big thing is nine won't work.
What would you like to see Heidi? I really love working with the members that I have. I'd hate to kick one out the door. It's six, you know, I mean, but then again, you know, there's been some frustrations. I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to keep six at this point because of the frustrations. So I mean.
Yeah, you're going to keep, you're going to keep four.
Yeah, yeah.
And seven captures a wider, I guess, cast the net a little wider to have more representation from different.
Okay.
And as long as the meetings continue to be held on Monday, that's not an issue.
Right, yeah. And, and that's, the Monday at two has been the time that works for the majority. And so that's why that's, you know, very consistent. So I mean, like I said, I love working with the members I have right now. I don't want to lose them. So that's, you know, kind of my thought for leaning towards seven, then I just need to find one more member to fill that extra seven spot because of the six that are continuing to attend.
So it sounds to me like we should start the process to have a seven-member board. Versus a nine.
Thank you.
And so you have a little paperwork.
I got a bar of a pen.
Okay.
I brought a new pen down.
I can get you.
And I'm so proud of it. And I'm looking around and I don't know what happened to it. I think, I think Dan.
The sheriff.
I think Dan Hill. I, I wondered, I went and talked to Jerry. I wondered if he like took it. Right. Okay, seven-member board. Okay.
So we can work on it. So what else we have on here? We have Brownsville Brent Project.
They wanted to talk about the community center. Sorry, not to interrupt. But there was one other item.
Well, there's several.
Yeah. Taking the community center off of their up of their responsibility with this.
My, my thought was the community center could report directly to a commissioner liaison and not have a board, but, and then that person come before the entire board, give updates and any approvals for changes in fees or forms or, you know, whatever. That's my thought.
That is my thought too.
So.
I'm okay with that. I'm always outvoted anyway.
Well, you know, I think it was appropriate to have this combined board when I was the full role. And then we worked out a lot of cases and so hopefully it's kink free from, from, you know, here on out. And so it, it's just, it's not quite fitting with the mission of economic development, as you guys know, so.
Yeah.
But, but you have to do an ordinance.
Okay.
You know, we put all this in that. Yeah.
Yeah. Bryce is making notes. He's going to work on.
With my pen. What's your hilarious pen?
Yeah.
Do you want me to give you a pen?
No, I'm going to run. I have a specific type of pen. So, okay, seven-member board and then we center will be taken from the seat up and the community center. Wow, thank you.
Now look at that.
That's nice.
It is a nice pen.
The community center coordinator or director will report directly to the board liaison. And then the board liaison, the commission liaison will bring it back to the commissioners.
Yeah, but, and I'd still like them to give monthly reports to the entire board.
Okay.
Well.
Thank you. The other thing that we had on here was the update on I, well, it's the Nevada I eighty Regional Development Authority. And I asked for a letter of support. Last night at the city council meeting, Kent Maher was there. Kent Maher has been on the planning of this regional development authority as well. He's like, why, why did you bring this Heidi? You know, why is this here? Well, because it was on the two thousand nineteen RFP, Request for Proposal for the Regional Development Authority. It was one of the criteria to meet. Well, we're working off of the two thousand nineteen RFP, not the coming ones that hasn't been released yet. So anyhow, Kent kind of felt that it was a little premature. And I, I was jumped in the gun. And he suggested that the city wait to get their letter of support till May. And, and so I'm just letting you know. So if you guys want to wait till May, that's, that's fine. It's no skin off my nose. I was just trying to dot all the i's across the t's. Ahead of time, but it's just still, we, we are planning, we are working on this and from the, on the regional development authority setup, so. I just made it a little bit exciting. So.
Yeah.
So we need to put it on our May agenda.
I, I would, I would ask for that. Yes, please. And then for the Brownsville grant update, I'll just be real quick. Just right along. I'm really excited about the, the industrial park because we have had Tulsa Warehouse and the, and the processing facility. Joined on yesterday, so they sent in their authorization to access, so they will be getting their phase ones done here soon. There's been some interest in those buildings of late, so this will be helpful in the process of, you know, selling or doing whatever they need to do. Now, with also with the industrial park, then we also joined forces with Tim Dutra. He owns several different properties down there as well. And because of the larger amount of acreage now that we're covering, we are actually going forward with certified sites now, which means basically we will know what the infrastructure is and that these are shovel-ready or what that means. And the one hanging up for a certified site is broadband, but with all the different other wigglings around in broadband lately, there may be solutions to that such as the Starlink stuff or, you know, what, it's broadband. But we're coming up with a plan, so exciting. So we're going to have certified sites soon. Just a quick recap is phase ones, we are sitting at completed, we've completed nineteen, our target was twenty-one. We have an additional three phase ones planned or underway. That includes the Tulsa Warehouse. For phase twos, we've had a target of twelve phase twos. We have completed twelve to date. With another four underway or being planned. Cleanup plans and analysis of Brownsville cleanup alternatives. We had a target of eight. We have three of those cleanup plans completed with another eight underway or being planned. Completed site reuse plan and certified site package. We had a target of four, we've completed three. Those three are on Main Street and now we will be adding the industrial part to that, so.
Cool.
Brownsville program's been a lot of fun. I really enjoyed this process. And I believe that our next team meeting, we're going to start talking about how do we continue to move this forward and reap the next funding cycle. So, yeah, very exciting. I love this project.
You've learned a lot with it.
Yeah, yeah, crazy.
All right, great job.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And Ted will move forward on making the changes that we need.
Awesome.
We'll get it going. I know, it's been a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, ladies.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
And Bryce, I'm sorry about your pens.
Okay. So we have an update on current and future projects at Morrison House Museum. Part of that is approval to accept a donation of a nineteen thirties railroad house. And a, an ice, ice house with two different buildings. And approval of buildings to be placed on the museum grounds, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
We have a lot of things happening at the museum that we're very, very excited about. Our current board is just super, super enthusiastic and are really working hard, doing a lot of things. We're taking this COVID time and we're not going to open the first part of our season. That we are doing some reorganizing, some serious cleaning, some painting. And we're here today to tell you a little bit about what we're doing and we're going to talk to you about the new buildings that we are coming up. Let you know the, we're doing a new mission statement to improve it, so it specifies a few more details about what we can and can't do at the museum. And what we really were wanting and planning to do. The Core Rochester Blacksmith Shop project is right on target. The pad is going to be poured by the county this month. And the moving date is set for that building to happen May tenth. It could have a little leeway, but that's where it is. It is going next to the assay house. And that should be a great, great contribution to our facility. On the assay house, the Frank Fisk has, I created a number of committees. And so we're all working on a committee and Frank Fisk took over the assay house. And you will not recognize the assay house. He's gone in and totally cleaned it. He's reorganizing it and it is just really going to be, be awesome where we can get people actually in to look at the building as it has not really been viewed for a number of years. Cobwebs were, spiders were afraid of the cobwebs. We have a vision now of the museum and the board is all on, I, well, the board is all on board. For this, we want to create in the other area, the fenced-in area of the museum grounds, which has, have the old equipment. We want to create a little facsimile town. Where we can theme some small buildings. Take some of the museum items and put them in there where people will use the whole area. Where it becomes more of, just let's just walk in the house and we're done. We want them to come and enjoy the whole grounds. The purpose, what we have now is we emptied a shed and moved it. We had to move it for the Blacksmith Shop. We want to make that a one-room schoolhouse. Paint it red, put some desk in it, some books in it, where people can see what maybe used to be the way life was. And, and pull interest in there. The Blacksmith Shop is going to pull more interest in because we have a lot of, you know, equipment. You know, things that we can put out there to relate to a Blacksmith Shop. The assay house, you know, Frank's got in mind of putting the scales and etc. over there, so it's not just locked up in a shed or just has, has to be put in the yard. So it's not just locked up in a shed or just haphazardly put in the yard, coming up with some themes. We want to do something like uh, a maybe a mercantile store. Uh, combine it with a doctor's office or a dentist's office. We have all this stuff at the museum. And we can make use of it. The museum, if you haven't been there, is kind of haphazardly put together. Uh, it's got an enormous amount of potential. And if we take some of this conglomeration of stuff and put it in the other part of the yard. Where people can wander around, look in a window, some of the buildings are not going to be able to go in. But the blacksmith shop, we're gonna have to view from outside and around. But the little schoolhouse, they'll be able to go in, what we plan, but this other building we'll talk about, they will be able to go in and actually see stuff. And not be overwhelmed with just the museum itself. We have a dentist chair, we got the, you know, the barber chair. We, I mean, we have a huge amount of things that we could. Create this facsimile town. Um, we're looking at, let's talk about the nineteen thirty railroad house. Bonnie, Bonnie got on this, so I'm gonna let Bonnie talk about this because it's exciting.
So the week that I got accepted in onto the board, I found this on Facebook. And it is a nineteen thirties railroad house. It has, it's built like this and there's four separate rooms. These people in Fernley will give us this house, but what we're asking for is to help with moving it.
Moving it, okay. Um, we'll talk about that in a minute.
It's up on railroad ties right now, so we were thinking we could put it in the center of town. So our mock town could work around that and have four different uh, displays in it. Where people could go in and walk around to maybe a doctor's office, a mercantile. Because we have some really, really fascinating items that we could put in there and make it look like an old store. Um, we've had a, a church idea, we've had, um, there's just so many possibilities. That what we could do, maybe, you know, connect these little buildings and we've got our eye on a couple of other buildings. We're gonna ask the owners if they would mind donating here locally. They'd be easy to move, they're close to the museum anyway, to make other little, and we can maybe even do like. Um, the boardwalks in between this little town, so the mock town looks as authentic as we can get. Um, we have big plans, we have lots of energy and enthusiasm.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're on top of all of this, we're actually actually actively seeking donations and contributions. So we have three commitments already. So we have a dollar figure, we gotta work on it, we gotta work on our letter, so we can do that. But uh, in connection with, not only with our railroad house. Which is, is really a cool idea, is Frank Fisk is gonna donate the old ice house, it's on his property. So, we can end up with some really, really interesting things that will draw people in. When you see some of the things and you see a building out there in the middle of the, the other acre or lot. Besides just the equipment, and they're gonna go, oh, what's that? You know, I mean, we can, we, our dream is to create it where people will really want to come in. Our goal is to start charging an admission fee or donation, so for everybody, so. You know, museums don't usually let people in for free, we've always done it. Make it pay for itself a little bit, where we can turn it back into some of this other stuff. We're uh, having to move that building. We are working with uh, Jeff Nevada Structuring. Uh, he's the one who's going to move the blacksmith shop uh, from Packard. Our budget is what we wanted to do, we've been approved to use our gift fund. To do painting and windows in the museum. We, as a board, determined that, yes, that would be nice and would look really good. But if we could expand the idea of the museum into more of the grounds. Give people more things to look at, a funner way to look at it, that then money would be better invested in another direction. This building upwards of twenty thousand dollars is what it's gonna cost us to move and set up the building. We have the money, we're asking if you would let us put these buildings on the museum grounds, it is county property. And uh, pay to have that building moved and then we will raise funds to do any updates. And, and, and you know, fix up and stuff that we need. Uh, we want to put false fronts on some of these other buildings that we're looking at, so we can make it. You know, kind of, kind of tie everything in and be back some of the things that used to be in Love Lockers.
It's all there.
It's all there. So we're asking if you'll give us permission, one is to put buildings, more buildings on the museum grounds. And two, to let us change the direction of our gift fund to increasing the attraction to the museum. Uh, we do have a cap of twenty thousand on that move of that building. And uh, Jeff is really working hard to, to meet, meet our, our needs. He's very excited about it, he's gotten aboard with it and say he's already involved with it because he's with the Packer project. In the core project. So we asked for a discussion on that a, and, and a possible action on that particular item. We, it's, it's just exciting. I, I've got board members that are just absolutely working every single day. It's, it's, Carol, you haven't seen the inside yet and it's by this weekend, uh, it'll knock your socks off. Because we are, we hoping it's gonna work.
And you're getting ready to paint.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting ready to paint.
Penny's getting all that stuff today, I think we can get some different supplies, so. We can uh, conceal the front of the desk, so it ties in and um. Uh, Penny and I plan on painting this weekend. Um, we've gotten everything off the walls, everything out of the cases, where you've seen some of the changes. Uh, moving things around, um, refreshing everything, cleaning everything as we go, so. At least the front room, the, the entrance way is gonna be done by this weekend.
It'll be very warm and, and welcoming because already with all the cleaning we've done, it smells bad. Yeah.
Well, it smelled like an old house.
Yeah, it, it's not that.
A dirty old house here.
It's not, it's not quite that way anymore because, say, we've done a lot. We will be, um, I've learned a lot about the word called a session. And a session is accepting donations and et cetera things to the museum, to a museum. Uh, then you accession it, can do a sessioning, means you're logging it in and gone through those processes. The next word is deaccessioning, and that means you're going through everything and say. Why is this here? Because it has absolutely nothing to do with Love Lock. Or looking at it going, uh, if you pick it up, it's gonna be in the gazillion pieces. So we, we are making listing of things we've got and the prior boards and organizing the museum. Uh, except with a lot of things that we are not antiquities and to do with. Uh, I can't tell you how many like school books we have. They're interesting, I love them, but they are not something that should be there, at least not in the qual- quantity that we have. So we are in the process of making a deaccession list that you county commissioners are going to be approached with. And uh, we'll ask you what to do with, we, we have ideas of what to do with those funds, whether we can do. A fun, you know, a yard sale and all the contributions go into the museum where we can do more things with it. Uh, maybe offer it to other museums if it pertains to their locale, uh, that kind of thing. So we're really having a lot of things that we're really wanting to do, we're trying to not buy off a huge buy even though we have. Uh, but we're.
What seems to be uh.
But everybody's really on board and we've tried, you know, we've kind of let the word out, see what we're doing to kind of feel out. What people are thinking about what we're doing and we have not met with one negative, not one negative that they say, oh. I'd like to be able to go see a museum. So on top of the fact that, that they want to see more of the museum. Uh, I got to go and do uh, the, my budget hearings and we got approved to increase from five hundred hours for an employee up to seven fifty. Which, in my calculations, we should be able to keep it up and open four days a week, ten and a half months a year. Close on county holidays. So that means instead of open from the end of March to the end of October, I'm afraid of God it's open. Uh, we will have it open Wednesday through Saturday. You know, through, I, we would like to see it open and the board is still hashing this out, so this is one of our other things we have on our agenda. Let's learn these artists, keep track of us. Uh, it's to have it open, so we have the Lovers Aloft weekend, it will be open, it will be open all holiday weekends, at least one day. We will close for those major holidays like uh, Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, but that doesn't mean we're gonna take. Family Day after Thanksgiving off, we'll be open because people want to come in. So if we make it consistently more open and more often longer. Uh, that we will draw, draw more people, because that has been our biggest complaint is. We, we don't know when you're open, so if we can guarantee you will be open Wednesday through Saturday. Middle of February to the end of December, that'd really be an awesome target and that's what we're looking for.
Do you have an open sign out there in the front?
Uh, we have a little sign.
It should be made bigger.
Well, that's the other thing, honors, is we want to do some signage.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we are going to do some new security lighting. I'll put that last part on my wishlist here in just a minute. Um, but that's kind of what we are doing at the museum, so we just need approval to be able to carry forward with. What we're really dreaming and envisioning, and it's a reality, it's, it's something that can really happen, it's not something that.
And I think another important thing is, you know, we are already, between Barbara and I, we've already gotten. Three promises from very prominent businesses for donations, but we're not, we don't want to rely on just the graciousness of. The commissioners to keep funding things.
Right.
We're willing to go out and help ourselves and that would be to. Get a donation letter and get it out to everybody, whether they can donate twenty dollars or five dollars. Because even after we get these buildings, if you approve that, we, we're gonna have to fix them up. And we have to get them, so they're going to be eye appealing to our public. So we're aware that we're gonna have to get out there and beat the streets for some donations and. You know, we're, we're finding that people are very generous with their time and their.
They'd like to see that.
Yes.
That they know it's there, but they have not really been able to enjoy it for a long time.
And you'd be surprised what we're finding in every door.
There are some hidden jewels that are just buried. And so we're, we're, say, we really got enthusiastic and everything is being done so far. The bores has donated a lot of, of, a lot of hours and muscle power. But they've also donated a lot of their own money to put, to buy some things and put together, so. Raising the, the, putting in a donation fee, of, of, you know, admission fee, is gonna generate some money.
Not a lot, but ton.
Well, I found forty-eight dollars in the donation box. I can't tell you, it's been there since at least October, but. I think that people are gonna be relatively generous when they come into museum, especially if we can give them something more than walk in the house. Walk through this crowded room and that's the end of it. The assay house, we're pretty sure has not been open to anybody viewing it for years. Which means the firehouse has not been open to enjoy. The core Rochester room hasn't been open to enjoy. And so we want to give people a chance to be able to go see this. It's luckily, we know we have a job to do, so we're not spending all of our time with, oh my gosh, we have that. Which is, is been really hard, got to do. The firehouse is the, the uh, fire department's responsibility, they're the ones who donated everything in there. That's their responsibility to maintain. But we got permission to go in, take everything apart. They clean that, the new donation, you know, new.
Shovel out the dead.
Display, yeah, yeah, new display cases and a range of where people can actually enjoy it and you walk around, because things are so crowded. Uh, just as an example, and then the fire department is great for that, they'll add muscles to our needs to move some things. Uh, Frank Fisk has taken that assay office and uh, there's an old forge. The, the, there was in there, he rebuilt the, the forge, because there's a big metal piece on the, the. Comes down from the sea where all the heat goes up, so he's got the piece that was outside, sitting there.
He's rebuilt that.
Yeah, he rebuilt it and so, and there's a back room that is like living quarters. So he's rearranged it and there's a cot and a table and.
An old desk.
An old desk and uh, it's.
It's gonna be cute.
It's, it's amazing the things that we found that he's doing and he's wandering through the museum and the grounds and saying. That can go on the outside, this can go on the table and look like that somebody's fixed lunch or dinner or whatever. We'll put a pot on the stove, we're gonna put a lamp over here. He went through his house, through his stuff at home that belonged to his dad. And so his truck was full yesterday and things was, you know, bringing too, so I think. The idea of what we really want to do is really beneficial for us to re-divert those funds.
There's a lot of Love Lock history just in that assay office.
Oh, amazing.
Did you find any gold?
No.
Floorboards, I mean.
No, we haven't done that yet, but mind you, we've only done the assay office and, and the both the bathrooms, we're going back to having.
Just in the bathrooms, when Penny and I were cleaning the bathrooms. Well, we probably got, we've gotten twenty boxes of just books that have nothing to do with.
For junk.
But one thing I was gonna say to Reed, we found a wedding dress from someone in the family, that, that Gondiegas. That was donated, it was in the bag, bathroom in a box, a beautiful wedding dress. So I want to, I, I'll try calling to see who that is, because we'd like to display that in, in the church from we get.
Well, that's another, do church.
Yeah, a beautiful wedding dress and the pillow and, and the veil.
On the wedding top.
Yeah, and the wedding top, we take weddings out.
And it's just been in a, in a box.
So I'm gonna run that volume.
So, things that have been kind of neglected, we've had, we had to throw, throw away uh, two fur coats. Because they were just tossed out in the shed and you can't recover those. Uh, probably originally was a beautiful rug, like an oriental type rug. Uh, just kind of semi-rolled up and tossed, and so you can't save that stuff.
Yeah.
So with what we do and if we create more buildings out there, we spread it out, it'll be, you know. Easier to keep clean, easier to track of and.
Do you have any other topics?
Oh, we do, okay, sorry, we get so excited, sorry.
You should see our work.
Yeah, um, and, and, no, you probably shouldn't. Thank you, gentlemen, we're gonna make you soon the next one.
It's hard to beat the enthusiasm out of us.
Uh, in cleaning up the, the bathrooms, um, one will go back to being public. Uh, one will be employee, um, but we need two, two, two new ADA toilets.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I don't even want to go in there.
They, they are not very nice.
No, they're, they're, and, and it's calcium and rust and that kind of buildup you just can't get rid of, so we need, we need to do that.
Was there money in the budget this year for a couple of toilets?
Couple what?
Toilets.
Well.
I mean, it's not, we're not talking big dollars, it's just.
Wouldn't that be a buildings and grounds thing, it's a building.
Yeah, and they've already looked at it.
Oh, they just, we just, they, they said we just need to make sure that we got permission to put in two new toilets.
Bruce has been very helpful. Yes, because you need handicapped.
Yeah, ADA, uh-huh, stuff, yeah, and, and that's currently what's in there, but we want to, you know, make that, uh, say do two new ones. So let me skim really quick, I think we hit everything, uh. The only other thing that is not on there that you don't know about yet, uh, we've gone and we looked at the uh, alarm system. That is there, all the windows are taped and et cetera. I found a bid from nineteen ninety-six, so we can pretty well guarantee you it doesn't work, but it looks good. It's a deterrent that way. Uh, there was a camera, uh. Mickey Mouse at best, that you couldn't even recognize a face on the monitor, so I did have uh. John Hanker look around and uh, give us a bid for our camera system. Because we do need the security out there, it's sitting out there, that's why we want to do light, more lighting, get cameras out there. Uh, we have a, a pretty valuable collection. Uh, Christine Johnson from, he used to be with the Historical Society, who was the Sparch Museum Director. Uh, she recommended that once we get it all together, that we get an appraiser out there to give us an actual value of some of the things we have. Uh, so a camera system, and everybody knows John is, he loves cameras, he loves security cameras. He's talking about five cameras on the outside, because we have a big property. Three on the inside, so that we have uh, the main entrance, the front door, and then at the top of the stairs. Uh, we have one bid, we're hoping maybe there might be in some ways, come up. Uh, we have one bid. We're hoping maybe there might be in some ways, come up with some of the COVID funds to cover this. Uh, we have a bid of thirteen thousand five hundred.
Is there any way COVID can?
Is there anything that, that?
I don't know. And I don't know what the new requirements are going to be to that, that new money. Once we see that, yes, there might be. I don't, I can't say.
So we're, we're.
But it's something.
That's something we would like, uh, you know, keep, uh, on mind and we really do need to get for a museum because we don't really have any protection that's kind of out there.
So it's thirteen thousand dollars?
Thirteen thousand five fifty.
Oh, five fifty.
Thirteen thousand five fifty and eighty-one cents. Yeah, and this is, uh, it's got a large storage system, uh, five, uh, five TV external storage drive, you know, a ACC seven core edition camera license. Core mounts, ceiling mounts, outdoor. And eight port for the cameras. Something that really should be done, needs to be done because we do have a pretty valuable collection. We're finding more and more. But we would like you to, to discuss among you and tell us whether we can divert those funds and get these buildings placed on county grounds.
It's. More security camera money left in the building fund. He has expended all that money.
For this year.
Yeah. So we either have to come out of his fire inspection line item or it would have to be diverted to our.
Okay.
And it'll probably have to be.
Probably would have to be.
Not this year.
So, Mr. Hanker taking care of the lighting.
Um, we have a, a number of dust to dawn and, uh, solar lighting. There are two poles out there with yard lights on and that are, uh, envy energy that, uh, I'm going, and one of the light is burned out or broken out. Excuse me. The other one is, uh, needs to be replaced.
She does this a lot when she talks.
No, you told me I wasn't limited. Leave me alone.
So you need to get a hold of envy.
Envy energy.
LED lights and those.
Get the LED lights and get them back going. Excuse me. I have bronchitis with allergies and we've had so much dust.
She needs some water, yeah.
Got your water, Mr. Ackley? Would you mind sharing? Thank you very much.
So I'm excited, and I know you guys are too, about the town concept. It's kind of like the ghost town of Beatty. Right. And I think it, it would be a real draw for people because there's just more there.
Right.
The possibilities, I'm, I'm so happy for all of you because the excitement is there and the desire and the board members who are willing to donate all their time and muscle and energy.
One board member of you is not really step forward.
Yeah.
Uh, Jana Laird is a, is a physically challenged one, but she's doing a lot of our paperwork searching.
Yeah.
She's been getting scrapbooks and she's doing all of those. So she's doing the scrapbook and, and.
One of the things we need to get donations for is the advertising. Get a sign on the free when we get open, up and running. I mean, that's in the future, like next year, but a sign for the entrance that
Everything needs to be signed.
I miss that turn half the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do, we've been going every day. I still turn around and
So, so there's money in the budget that was approved for painting and windows.
It's in our gift fund.
Yeah.
So we can.
There is money in the budget.
We can move this. Thirty-nine thousand.
Divert it.
Yeah, it, it, it's been approved that we could spend it already and what we wanted, we wanted you to change change the path of where it was gonna go, what the purpose and change it over to, uh, let us apply those funds to moving, moving this building. Uh, we are on a timeframe that people, bless their heart, are just waiting to hear from us.
So nice. They, they put it pending because I text her almost every day that we're working on it. We're working on it.
Wow. Okay. I will make the motion to approve the change of, change of use from, but the museum get fund?
No, no, it's from painting and windows.
And windows.
To, to moving.
Moving the nineteen thirties railroad house and the ice house.
Possibly, yes. Yep, yep. Um, we're trying to get our local ranchers maybe help us move that ice house.
An approval of the buildings to be placed on the mu- museum grounds, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion.
You guys are good to us.
Thank you so very much for your time. Thank you. We're looking forward to come down after this weekend. We're looking forward to it. We may, I see what we're doing. Because it's pretty amazing.
Well, it is. It's, it's nice to see something happening after all this time.
Yeah, well, it, uh, the, the grounds are being improved too. We're taking out some of the weeds and plants and, and zero scape, you know, where we can just waste stuff again.
Yes, we don't have to take so much time with county employees working on it. It's easy to, to maintain. Not all of us are Mrs. Kilfoyle. We can't. We need all those flowers.
Okay, thank you. And I would have to add that, uh, it's nice to see Gail Monk out and about.
Yes, it is. Hi, Gail.
Yeah. Okay, going back to our, uh, regular order of business, we run K, which is Public Defender. We do have Oh. Oh, gee. I guess I did. We have a, an item, uh, for to appoint Dave Skell to be, uh, the acting interim community center coordinator until the position is filled.
He's volunteered to do that.
Well, I asked him because he was on the community center board. And he has volunteered to do it. But it's, it's been very frustrating.
So he has volunteered to do it.
Yeah.
As, as a volunteer person, not a person.
Not a big person.
Is he taking on more than just covering anything? I mean, what we need right now is someone to cover to make sure that the events, you know.
He's, he's doing the scheduling. He's, um, in contact with Myron and John. Um, he, he goes down and listens to the voicemail or.
Answer machine.
Answer machine. Um, and Heidi's been a big help in getting things.
Just trying to make sure things run smoothly. I mean, he has a foundation knowledge of what's going on over there, which is helpful just for being on the board and, and also, uh, having his own events there. Um, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, there's no glitches and, and provide support that I can, which I've done with any funding that's over there. I might throw one other item in. I questioned Heidi yesterday because she did a couple of vouchers for the community center. For that to happen, we have to have a memorandum that says whoever is authorized to do the vouchers. Because we have to have that on premises when I pay the offer. So if you're gonna continue to have Heidi do those vouchers, I need to have a memorandum from whoever this state.
Do we have to take official action, Bryce, or can we?
To appoint him? Yeah.
Well, not to appoint him, but for the vouchers.
For the vouchers.
Can we just?
I would just keep it as Heidi doing it, right?
Yeah.
We just do a letter.
Okay, so.
Heidi or me or.
So, so Karen could do.
Actually, we could just appoint you so we don't have to drag Heidi.
That, that's too close to, you have to have checks and balances. So.
But as the auditor, I can.
No.
Yeah.
Need authorization on all vouchers.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's nothing wrong with being. Sunday.
So Heidi would just bring them to you or, because I have I have no clue how this works. I'm, I'm.
Do you have the templates of all the creative stuff? Yeah, I have all the account numbers and all the, all the incentives for that. So if she has all the templates and all the account numbers. And I can sign. Yeah. Elaborate.
Handle.
Perfect. Thank you, Heidi.
Yeah.
Okay, we still have, uh, an appointment to do.
So you can understand one thing.
Yes.
So everybody knows, there was some talk about getting together an agreement or contract with Mr. Skell. It's probably not going to be necessary because it's an appointed position. Um, you can quit anytime. The commissioners can remove him at any time. So there's really no need for a contract. He's not getting reimbursed. He's not getting paid for this.
Right.
So just so long as everybody understands that.
I'll make the motion to is it a point? The point, um, David Skell to be acting with the center. Coordinator, what was the original?
We changed the job title to coordinator.
Coordinator.
Yeah.
Until the position is filled.
As a volunteer.
As a volunteer.
And I'll second that motion.
Uh, before you, before you.
Yes.
There's, there, there now becomes the question of access to the community center. Access to the community center calendar on the website. Is the operator to volunteer is not controlled. Should I include that access?
And I think we discussed that and then the answer to that was no.
We discussed that. This would be the goal as.
But, but in order to do that, you have to give him email access and everything, correct?
To the community center email? And that is just the community center.
It would be the same, it would be the same thing we were talking about.
Uh-huh. So, so couldn't we give Heidi that access? And then if she needs to forward something on DM, she can, but we need to get this position filled as quickly as possible. And we talked about changing it, which is not on the agenda because we didn't, but from part-time to full-time. So we have to put that on our next agenda and, and get this fixed so that we can get some candidates. Um, but we're talking maybe, and hopefully another, not more than another month.
Exactly.
So, uh, in my mind, if Heidi wouldn't mind at least having the access to the calendar and all that, then we don't have this problem that we're, we've discussed.
Yeah.
And that's my thought. And, you know, my only other concern too with appointing him as acting interim coordinator is that he doesn't take on any more than what he needs to do just to make sure it's covered.
Right.
Correct. You know, that he doesn't go beyond and, and.
Dave's been working with Myron and, and buildings and grounds and so far, other than a few little glitches. It's been working. I didn't have a full-time job.
So we had a motion if we are not.
Yeah. And that you guys.
Okay with that motion then.
No, I'm okay with the motion to appoint him, but not as far as providing him access, which is an access to the community.
Very true.
Yeah.
Right.
But appointing him as a volunteer to help in the meantime.
I think that was the motion.
Yeah, it was. And I seconded it.
I didn't hear you second.
I'm sorry. I did second it.
That's what I was waiting for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
And then, I don't know, we need to, we need to, I guess, put on our next agenda about um, making it a full-time position and changing the description.
We'll discuss on Monday.
I was just giving lazy time. I was giving her time to catch up. You're good? Okay, so now we're at Public Defender. We do have a written report from the Public Defender. Any comments, questions?
No.
No. For enforcement.
She does not have anything to report to the board. Uh, I went upstairs and asked her, she would like to know if the board would like her to report monthly or or we is still, okay.
I'm not reporting.
Okay.
Unless there's something that comes up in the meantime, then she needs to let us know. But
Yeah.
She's doing a great job and.
She is.
She's good.
She's on, uh, she's on the agenda about every month and I text her in the meeting and ask her if she's ready for her report and it scares her. And then, uh, was there any discussion at the Love Lock?
I would add that I went to the city council meeting last night and one of the topics, of course, was code enforcement. Uh, there was testimony given uh, with addresses of, uh, up, almost fifty addresses that really need some code enforcement attention. They do not have a code enforcement person. Uh, they do send letters out, but they don't have anything else. So I, uh, I suggested that at our next joint meeting, we at least address that and see if there's something they, they being the city would like to do to combine an effort. So we'll see. I put it out there for them to mull. Okay, we're actually down to Lacy.
Um, my new employee started part-time on Monday. Um, we're working through getting all her, through access and then access on my computer thanks to Justin. And then she moves to full-time just, just like Monday in May. Um, next meeting, I'll have a list for you of the tax file properties. I sent a file to Wood for Asset yesterday, so I'm waiting to, to make sure that all is good to go up on my website. And the sale will be, it'll open on May twelfth first and close the following Tuesday. We mailed out one entry of delinquent notices and yesterday was a busy day protecting.
Yes.
Apparently goes well. And then I did give you a list of corrections to approve. These are the personal party accounts that already found or missed filled. So those bills have been sent out.
So you're ready?
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that we approve the corrections to the tax rule as provided.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, the credit.
Credit card limit.
And, and. So I'll make a motion that we approve the salary resolution for Perry Stewart. Um, bringing her in as an admin clerk to, at a twenty-six-two.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Credit card limit increased to five thousand dollars for James Evans, uh, planning and building.
So moved.
So I'll second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, no, motion. Reed.
Heidi, do you have anything further? No, I did not work yesterday, so that's. I've got some.
Is that something?
Okay, assessor. We have a somewhere in all this. I know we did. I have it. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, do you want me to read the report?
I don't know that we need to read it. I mean, it's several pages long.
She's provided us with information that Lacey can reference.
Okay, Bryce Shields. I do not have anything. Karen is not here. The sheriff is up finally.
I don't have anything nearly to say as a museum board, so. The only thing I have to say is that we currently have taken inmates into custody and we deploy the rear horse for the next COVID.
The sixteen?
Yes. I guess I should ask you as a senior center, I wanted to put one right there on the lot where the parking is. Far enough back away that people can see past the stop sign, but since the event's going to be there, I figured that'd be a good place to.
Yeah. I, I had.
Keep it out of the way where most people park so that they're still, you still aren't parking anywhere.
Yeah. I had told them that, to me, the most logical place, since they're setting up a unit, it sounds like a bowl type unit for shots. Put it out on that east sidewalk or by, by that east.
That's kind of where I would play right there.
Yeah.
One road, looks like Franklin in the, in Western.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I put the other one over here and made one out.
Okay.
Everybody to drive by, you could see it.
Yeah.
So.
And. Yeah. In case you don't know, this is a, it's actually a FEMA project. With funding to provide shots or vaccines to the worlds. Then this came in, of course, to Shumber.
It's the, it's Johnson vaccine.
Johnson.
Yes, the John, it's the one-time shot, Johnson Johnson.
And when is this?
Next Friday, the six, twenty sixteen.
I won't be here.
And then the only other thing I had was the other item I had on the agenda was that I have six points on it. I hope you wanted to take that out of order or wait till that.
Oh, yeah. We could, we could do it.
Oh. We've taken everything else out of order today. Yes.
So it was just for the sheriff app. The district experiment that I price, we got together last week, we discovered. Any concern, you know, either one of us had, using some of those funds, so. I don't have any other further update for the board. Hopefully we're doing well for that, so we can. Then when we get the other things like what's down on the sixteen, we'd be able to push that out. The massive amount of road construction that are coming up, any crashes, those kind of things, be able to push out.
Chair's is coming out of.
It's going to be on a budget run. The asset forfeiture of the costs are a problem and potentially care funding.
Okay.
And it benefits all three of those.
So I have a question. Is there an annual fee to this? This, there's.
There is. It's included in the contract, right?
Okay.
Yeah. And what I would do is hopefully, what my client is, is to roll that into my programming budget item that I have every year to maintain the plethora of programming that we have. It's not a, it's open to fee, so.
And then my other question is, who's going to be doing the updating and putting the information on the app?
First of all, it would be me, but I'll probably tie in our dispatch supervisor, our office staff, there'll be a few people on my minutes that will have access to that so that. If one person happens to get out of town or is actually involved with that incident, we can still get those, that information.
So after you brought this to us at our last meeting, I, I downloaded the Knight County app. I'm getting all kinds of accident reports and everything. No, it's a good app.
Yeah.
And the main thing is getting the advertisement out there so people know to download the app.
And that's part of the initial package prices. They will do all that. They'll give us a link on our website that we can push that out. And then they'll have the backwoods and everything that we can put out and those kind of things.
Good.
Yeah, so.
And we can give you a lot of access to a lot of information.
Yeah.
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, I thought it's a great app. Like you said, getting all these notifications.
I'll make the motion to approve. Purchase of sheriff app notifications in. The amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars with. COVID funds, forfeiture funds and commissary funds. And also.
So a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. You ditched. Number seven is update and progress on site location. I, I'm not even going to report on anything that's going on there. Forty man project we did.
Is there a commissioner available or commissioner right there? Are you available on Friday to do that? The transaction with that.
James, I'm going to Tulon Peak early, so it'll be like afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plan for that.
Okay. Anytime in the afternoon works for him, so just let me know and I'll text it.
I could call you on my way back then.
Okay.
Okay. Derbyfield Airport, Lacey had a report that she did with the FAA or something. You, you just signed it. Yeah, in a way, we had a report. Nine-one-one surcharge committee, the request for approval and recommendation of, to the county commissioners to follow the legislative guidelines and meet annually.
So that's something that would have to be put in an ordinance too. And that's why I was saying we could put several different things in an ordinance change, but. Is it annually? I mean, what's been provided says it's annually.
I think that was already a requirement for the nine-one-one committee to meet.
It's quarterly. Most nine-one-one committees meet quarterly. There's no requirement, the NRS. That sets up the formation of these boards. The only requirement is if you have a nine-one-one surcharge, then you have an advisory board. To monitor those funds and make sure that they're being collected appropriately and distributed appropriately.
So do you recommend that it be changed from quarterly to annually or you're okay?
I, I did a little bit of research and just because other counties are doing it, doesn't mean that that's how we should be doing it. But I have found some counties meet monthly, some counties meet quarterly. There isn't a single county that meets annually. I think it would be difficult to make sure that business is being. That those funds are being monitored the way that they need to be.
Yeah.
If they're only meeting once a year.
Where did this come from?
I don't know.
It's Skelton's request. And, and in order to get things resolved, I put it on there just so that we can discuss it and resolve it and.
And I'm not sure where the language, the legislative guidelines. I'm sure that Mr. Skell put that on there. There's no requirement. A lot of times advisory boards, when they're designated by statute or authorized by statute, they will designate or they'll require that those boards meet a certain. A certain amount of times a year, quarterly, monthly, bi-monthly. But yeah, for some reason, this advisory board, it's left silent. But for a long, long time, this advisory board, it's been meeting quarterly.
Yeah.
And.
My recommendation would be to leave it as it is.
And, and that's fine. I just wanted it to be discussed.
Sure.
Dealt with and, and that's the motion, Larry.
My recommendation is to leave it as it is, yes.
I'll second that.
I can't make a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion. You can second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next thing up is board appointments. We have. A resignation and a request for an appointment. Love Lock Valley Wheat Department.
From Mr. Renfro and a request from Joe Gotch.
To be appointed.
Ask that example to be placed. Well, you have to accept this one.
Accept the resignation and appoint.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Renfro. And then make the motion to accept Joe Gotch on the Love Lock Valley.
And now second now.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
And then we have a letter from Thomas Bjorky asking to be appointed to the nine-one-one advisory committee. There is a vacancy, so I would make that amendment.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Tom.
Um, there was someone who was supposed to have turned in a letter.
Lucy Peterson wanted to pull her letter through the respect.
Yeah, she's okay with that, but one from Lowell Henderson. Cause he said he, it's fine. It's just, okay.
The other one was for what?
Lowell Henderson was going to put in for the recycling ward, but we don't have a letter, so, and he said he did, but that's okay. Not there.
Okay, now we're down to number fifteen, which is Division of Water Resources to request to levy a special assessment of the groundwater basins within Virgin County. And this is an annual.
I think it's wonderful that they're all together instead of.
Yeah, instead of springing out.
Yeah. So I would make the motion to go ahead and approve all these special assessments.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Litigation?
Uh, no.
Report from legal counsel.
I found my pants.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Shane.
You're welcome.
I was sitting on it the entire meeting. I, I have no report to give before.
Okay. Update on twenty twenty-one legis lady matters. All the BDRs have been coming.
We have the innovation zones that is not good legislation and I would like to recommend that we, you know, send the letters.
Send a letter of denial.
Yeah, and that we don't support it. And, and also, there's the property tax bill that they put in that I would like us to support. But there's so many BDRs and so many bills and some really poor legislations.
Some very poor legislation.
So anyway, that would be my motion.
Okay.
I will second.
I will. Motion and a second. All those in favor? So just so we don't authorize or approve of their actions.
No, we don't. We have a proclamation for National County Government.
We jumped over one.
Yeah, and I can just make a motion that we, we do that proclamation.
Yeah.
I will second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then this one too. The, the recovery plan that we have, it's also on our Board of Health agenda, but. Like our, the board, you know, and we can do this at the Board of Health meeting, but the board has to approve the plan.
Is this just a bill to the state?
Yes. So. And I just did a real quick cover letter that can be changed. I mean, I, but where we have all the signatures of the, the people that need to sign it. And so I'm just asking, Sean has looked at this, Dr. Van Gilder. And I have information from the school and from the hospital as well that we would include and. I would just like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this and we'll put it on the one for their approval too. But we've got to go through their motions to, to get that transition. So anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. We're going to talk about this more at.
Yes, yeah. I'll make one.
Works for administrative assistant, Karen. Items for future agendas.
I don't.
Correspondence. Members of the board for discussion, Shayla.
I have to thank Heidi for all of, all of your hard work with economic development and then taking one for the team for the communities and helping out there.
You know, thank you. It's been a lot of support from board members that should be noted as well because there's no way.
And. Simple matter of water, meeting via Zoom on Friday. Pretty much as of right now.
And I don't really have anything more. We have cemetery board coming up, hospital board, healthcare foundation, all the communities are coming up and that's about it.
The only thing I would report is on TV board, as I did make a successful trip finally to Tulon Peak on Friday.
Did you get a snow cap?
I got Channel Eight back. I had to plow through the snow, but I got there. Got Channel Eight back up and working. It isn't perfect. Norm or technician guy is going to go back up there with me this Friday. To see what else we can do to improve reception on TV. Okay, public again. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on that agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Public comments. Seen that? In the on Zoom? Okay, no public comments. We are in recess for approval of vouchers. We'll come back in session for approval of vouchers.
I'll look to approve the vouchers and I'm second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of vouchers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Getting entered.